Okay, everybody, I think we're gonna get ready to get started here. People will file in, but we've got some non-voting business beforehand, so we'll go through all of that. I will call the meeting to order that we have a quorum. We have over 30 voters. Just so you're aware, we have a list of tellers that will be counting votes as they are needed. We have Ann Buckley, Annie Cameron, Matthew Casey, Vicky Cataldo, Rebecca Jones, Erin Kirchner, James Lewicki, Teresa Mansfield, Kathleen McKinnon, and Al Wolf. If we could all stand for the Pledge Allegiance. The Pledge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If we could have, I guess Ruth has an announce. Ruth, do you have an announcement for us?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us on this beautiful Saturday afternoon. We appreciate everybody that's come out in attendance. So to start our afternoon, we have some very special awards. As you know, we have a call fire department. These are men and women who have volunteered their time, days, nights, weekends, holidays, to jump out of bed and rush to our bedside or burning homes or whatever we need from them. They are an amazing group of people. So I have four awards to present this afternoon. They are for years of service. So if we have Mike French and Dan Dousit amongst us today, if they could come see me, please. Brendan, did you see either of them?
Are they here?
I see Dan headed my way. So Dan Dousit, as most of you know, served our town as the chief of the fire department for 12 years. He has served us in total for 35 years. And one of the things that many of you may not know is that Chief Dousit, at the time, has been an unbelievable partner in making sure that our new public safety building has come to fruition. He has been on every construction call, every Thursday at 10:00 a.m., making sure that he has monitored all the changes, change orders, anything we've needed. So we appreciate every moment of Dan's time. He is still serving us, and hopefully we will have him for many years to come. I'm hoping that Michael French is with us today. Okay. I'm being told that Mike French was not able to make it, so I'm gonna move on. If I have Joe LaFata in the audience, if he could make his way my way, please.
Hi, Joe.
How are you?
So Joe has been with the fire department for 30 years. Joe is currently the lieutenant of the ambulance. He makes sure that all of our medical supplies are stocked at all times, that they don't expire, that he's ready for any call. And again, we just appreciate all the years of service. Joe has been with us for 30 years, and we appreciate every one of those years, and hopefully he's also with us for many more. The next member of the fire department is David Perrine, and I know he's in the audience.
If you can't find a chair, if you could grab a chair and bring it with you and put it up back, we'd rather not have people sitting down on the lawn or hanging up against the fence because it's very difficult to count if people are on the ground or on the fence. So if you, I didn't mean that. That pun was not intended. But we will probably not be able to count your vote if you're hanging out on the fence. So if you don't, if you don't have a seat, there's a couple over here. If there are no more chairs, please grab one and put it on the back of one of the sections so we know where you're gonna be voting. And if you are not a registered voter, which means you do not have a green card to vote with, there's a section over here for non-voters. And we do allow certain people that are not voters to speak. Sorry, Ruth. But we have our attorney, Greg Corbo. We have Brendan. There's members of the school committee that are also here that are not Essex registered voters. Sorry, Ruth, go ahead.
No worries. Thank you. We have David Perrine, who's been with the Essex Fire Department for 30 years. The last eight, he has served as lieutenant of Engine One. And as of the last meeting, he was promoted to captain. So David will be serving for the town for, hopefully, another 10 years or so. So the next award that we have this afternoon, again, it's for employees with years of service. This is for an employee of our sewer water department. He has been with us for 20 years, and we appreciate every one of those years of service. So traditionally, these awards are given at our special town meeting in the fall. So these awards are for 2020. Having said that, I'm bringing that up because this one is for the Employee of the Year for the year 2020. This particular employee really, when I say went above and beyond, those words don't even begin to describe what this employee did for this town. So this employee is Erin Kirchner. If I could have Erin come up with me, please. Erin is our Board of Health Administrator. She has worked tirelessly, making sure that our entire town was safe during a global pandemic. Erin went above and beyond, helping every single aspect of this town. She not only helped our town, she was also stepping in and helping Manchester. She helped the school committee. She helped the Council on Aging. She helped the police department, the fire department. She has been there through thick and thin in every step of the way, and she continues to amaze me every day. So I just want to make sure that we extend the warmest thank you to Erin ever. I just want to point out that Michael French, who has served us in the capacity, we're presenting an award today for being on the fire department for 35 years. Michael, many of you probably know him as Officer French or Detective French. He was on the police department for many years and has since retired. So I just want to make sure that Michael is acknowledged as well. So thank you, Michael French.
Okay, again, there are chairs over here. If you want to grab those before they're gone. If you can't find one, again, grab one up here. And I'm gonna need people that are in the aisles, which, if you can see the orange cone, that's an aisle. You're gonna have to pick one side or the other so we can count your vote when it comes to that. I would like to have a moment of silence. We had two former members of either town board or employee. We had Dick Carter pass away. We had John Cushing pass away. And not a board member, but we had my neighbor, who some, most of you know if you grew up here or been here for a while. Sally O'Malley passed away. She was a reporter for the Gloucester Times. She probably went to more meetings and events and took pictures of half the people in this crowd. So I'd just take a moment of silence for those three individuals. Thank you. I'd also like to recognize a couple of individuals that have been serving on boards that are still with us but are not running or no longer on that board. We have Annie Cameron, and we have Bill French. And we also have Chris Grant. Chris Grant was on the Essex Tech Board for Essex, and that is now gonna be Alva Ingharo. So those three individuals are not running again or did not win their position. And Ruth already recognized Dan Dousit for the chief, but I'd like to recognize the new chief, who is going to be Raimi Reader. So it looks like everyone's in. So that's perfect timing. I'll take a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Is there a second? All in favor? Thank you very much. Before we start the articles, the Finance Committee, I'd like to get a report, if I could, from the chairman on whether they, which financial articles they support. That would be Ben.
Is this working? Okay. Yes, we support the financial articles on behalf of the Finance Committee for today's warrant. I do want to say that we do feel that there is more work that should be done by the regional school district with respect to Article 11, to consider all means of reducing the assessment on the town as we progress through fiscal 2022 and actuals become known. We understand that factors that give rise to such a reduction are still not well-understood, so we support the school district apportionment figure that is presently before us this meeting, with the hope that the figure might be reduced during the fiscal year, translating to this meeting's apportionment not being fully spent. There has been considerable uncertainty created by the COVID environment, which necessitated us to take a very conservative approach to the budgets of our town departments. The district assessment, and apportionment, I should also say, is disproportionately high this year by historical standards, and we've requested consideration of the school utilizing reserves to reduce the increase. The district has not supported doing so to date, given continuing stresses on school operations and concern about credit impact. While there is uncertainty, there is also likely significant funding coming from the federal government to help schools. We ask that the district strongly consider reducing the assessment as we proceed through fiscal 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. So people that are standing, I need you to get chairs and so you're not moving around.
You need to be on the blacktop.
And we want you on the blacktop so we can keep track of all that, not on the fence.
And in a section.
And again, in a section, not just randomly around. So if you're not on the hot top and you are in a row, please move to a section. That would be very helpful. Then we can move along pretty quickly. Again, non-registered voters are over here. If you have a card, when I'm calling for a vote, I'm gonna ask you to raise your card. If I am in doubt, we'll do a standing count with the tellers. And if we have to go to a secret ballot, we have, we'll have balloting stations up here, and I'm gonna start from, I would start from the back and have the people come up to the front. You'll get your card checked. You'll get a card that's either yes or no perforated, tear it in half, you vote the way you want, and discard the other one in a trash barrel. If we have one. And then if, I'll go over more detail if we do have one. And then once you make your, cast your vote, please return right back to your seat, and then things can move along a lot quicker. Thank you very much. And without further ado, we will turn to motion number one. Excuse me. Article one. Ruth.
I, Ruth Perrine, move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint a surveyor of bark and lumber.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor of Article one, please raise your card. Any noes. Article two.
Leave the report.
Can you start over, Peter?
Sure.
Thank you.
I, Peter D. Fippen, move that the town receive the reports of the town officials, boards, and committees contained in the annual town report.
Is there a second? Discussion? No discussion. All those in favor of Article two, please raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes.
I, Guy D. Bradford, move that the town vote to approve the wage and salary scale for fiscal year 2022 in accordance with the recommendations of the Personnel Board Report.
Is there a second? All those in favor of Article three, raise your card. All those opposed? A motion passes. Article four.
I, Guy D. Bradford, move that the town fix the salary and compensation of each of the elected officers of the town as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended, for fiscal year 2022 in accordance with the recommendations of the Personnel Board Report.
Is there a second? Discussion? No discussion. All those in favor of Article four, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. Before I go on, if you're gonna speak to an article, don't wait in your chair till there's an open mic. Please step up to a mic. There's two here, and there's two here. That will, things will move along a lot quicker. If you're gonna speak to it, get to a microphone. That would make it a lot easier, and I'll get you, hopefully, in the order that you got to a microphone. Article five.
I, Ruth Perrine, move that the town vote to transfer from the Town Septic Betterment Fund the sum of $20,905 for the purpose of making necessary payments to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust during fiscal year 2022 in accordance with the terms of repayment for community septic management program loan funds.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor of Article five, please raise your card. Any opposed? Seeing none, Article five passes.
I, Benjamin Buttrick, move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $8,608,954 as follows. A, raised by taxation, the sum of $2,195,692 for debt repayment, principal and interest. B, transfer from the cemetery sale of lots fund the sum of $4,800 to the cemetery budget. C, transfer from the cemetery lot care fund the sum of $5,425 to the cemetery budget. D, transfer from the town technology fund the sum of $9,520 to the town IT budget. E, transfer from the ambulance fund the sum of $50,000 to the ambulance budget. F, transfer from the street lighting fund the sum of $3,000 to the street lighting maintenance and repair budget. And G, to raise by taxation the sum of $6,340,517 to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the town according to the remaining budget items as indicated in the Finance Committee report. And to authorize the Finance Committee to permit budget line item transfers within a department from salary lines to salary lines and from expense lines to expense lines. And further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to deny payment of any expenditure with fair warning to the affected departments, should it be necessary to exercise fiscal constraint in the face of revenue reductions resulting from the ongoing COVID-19 crisis or any other reason, all in accordance with the Board's authority under Section 52 of Chapter 41 of the General Laws.
Is there a second? Discussion, Ben?
I mean, this is basically the main financial article for the town departments, public safety, the infrastructure of the town, et cetera.
So, thank you. Any other discussion? I see no one. All those, oh, sorry. A little quicker, Ed.
Ed Neil, 15 Western. Last year, I asked about this, the last provision that you, is part of your motion, which was that the Selectmen had the authority to transfer from any department budget that we approved here. And it was agreed that, in the condition of the emergency, that that might be a necessary step to take. I'm curious, did that happen this year? Was money moved by the Selectmen outside of the parameters of the budget that we approved last year? Thank you.
The answer is no. That did not become necessary.
Thank you, Brendan. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article six, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes.
I, John Philias, move that the town vote to transfer from Sewer Enterprise Fund free cash the sum of $45,000 to the maintenance line item of the fiscal year 2021 Sewer Enterprise Fund budget.
Is there a second? Discussion?
This money will be used to replace a grinder pump at one of the sewer pump stations.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article seven, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes.
I, John Philias, move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $2,180,568 for the Sewer Fiscal Year 2022 Enterprise Budget as follows. A, debt repayment, principal and interest, the sum of $910,708 from sewer bediments, and the sum of $328,911 to be raised by taxation. And B, funds to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the Sewer Department, $940,949, from Financial Committee to permit budget line item transfers within the Sewer Department from salary lines to salary lines and from expense lines to expense lines.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Basically, this is to fund the Sewer Budget this year.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article eight, please raise your card. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Article nine.
I, John Philias, move that Article nine be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? All those in favor of postponing Article nine, please raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes to postpone.
I, John Philias, move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $798,781 for the fiscal year 2022 Water Enterprise Fund budget as follows. A, debt payment, principal and interest, the sum of $12,364 from water bediments, and the sum of $10,970 from department receipts. And B, funds to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the Water Department, The Finance Committee to permit budget line item transfers within the Water Department from salary lines to salary lines and expense lines to expense lines.
Is there a second? Discussion? All those in favor of Article 10, please raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. John, could you bring your motions up to Pam when you get a chance? I know you had a bunch in a row, so I let you do them all up here. Article 11.
I, Sarah Wolf, move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,695,830 to fund the town's assessment from the Manchester Essex Regional School District. Said sum to be calculated solely in accordance with the agreement between the towns of Essex and Manchester by the Sea, Massachusetts, with respect to the formation of a regional school district. As most recently amended by invoking and approving the provision found in Paragraph Four of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16B, allowing district members to reallocate the sum of their required local contributions to the district in accordance with the regional agreement for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021.
Is there a second to that motion? Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We had quite a year. First, I offer thanks to all the parents and families for their patience and support as we navigated a difficult situation during the pandemic. Our goal during the crisis was to create a structure that would be accessible, accountable, and engaging for all students. Planning and adapting as public health guidelines were constantly updated, we delivered our curriculum with a typical school schedule, offering supports to students to help them thrive during the pandemic. We overcame challenges to provide a full academic experience with appropriate time and learning while keeping our schools and our greater community healthy and safe. Thanks to the collaboration of our administrators and teachers and the resilience of our parents and students, we were able to accomplish these goals. Throughout the year, our students and staff learned to embrace and develop critical 21st century skills. We began work on a strategic plan that will guide our district into the future. The Manchester Essex District in its 20th year is poised to meet the challenges of the next 20 years. Our school system is rebounding from the COVID crisis and looking to a future where our graduates will have the knowledge and skills to compete in a global market. We have nearly completed two exciting building projects. The new Memorial School and the new Essex Playground are both on time and on budget. We continue to pursue parity between the two elementary schools by providing necessary updates to health and safety, security, and technology. Currently, our greatest challenge is the budget, and we have been working collaboratively with the Boards of Selectmen and Finance in both Essex and Manchester, meeting regularly to share information and map a multi-year strategy. The district, in collaboration with our partners, has remained an efficient and responsible steward of your investment. While delivering an excellent education to your students, we have maintained very even assessment growth of 3.17% per year over the last five years. The budget we present to you today shows a 3.5% year-over-year growth, with the district utilizing $335,000 from reserves and making operational cuts to minimize costs to task payers and meet our target range for assessment growth. Additionally, we have managed the COVID crisis without any financial impact to the towns by using $960,000 of reserve funds to support COVID-related costs, including health and safety supplies, technology investments, and additional staffing. We greatly appreciate the continued support of our families, our communities, and our town partners as we develop a plan to address our budget challenges while maintaining the excellent education program the people of Manchester and Essex deserve. We remain committed to the education, well-being, and safety of your children. Please join me in voting to support Article Two and fund our public schools. Thank you.
I'm not sure who was first.
Somewhere in this $8.7 million budget is funding to teach the children of the district that our country is racist, and that it needs to be reimagined. They are teaching our students, who are majority white, that the values of hard work, excellence, the family unit, religion, math, and even proper English is oppressive to non-whites. This teaching implies that non-whites do not have values, have those values, and are not capable of solving problems without the help of white people. I don't know how much the district is spending to teach this because it is embedded in every class and activity throughout the day by teachers and staff. Whatever amount of money is spent on this is too much. During the town's budget discussions, I was impressed by our town's efforts to stay within the 2.5% property tax increase limits and then taken aback by the district's comment that a minimum 3.5 annual that a minimum 3.5 annual increase is needed to stay level funded. I have reached out to the school committee and the districts for specifics and have received no response. I will read my recent letter to the school committee to this town meeting in hopes that a response will inform the voters. This is dated 3/3, March 3. It pains me to write this letter, to be that person, but I feel I should speak up while I still can. I am concerned by the advocacy curriculum being taught in the district. Let me preface that by stating that to empower is good and to victimize is not. To demonize one group while victimizing another in the name of social justice is the worst. This is a difficult topic to discuss, and I will attempt to focus on its impact on the town's budget. In July, I emailed the superintendent and curriculum director to please describe the anti-racism program that was adopted by the school committee. I received no response. Last month, in February, well, this was written in March, during budget discussions, I asked the school committee and superintendent to define what a program is and to provide the cost and FDEs necessary to fund those programs so that it could be factored into the budget cut discussions. I was told by the school committee chair that anti-racism program was not a program but a resolution and that my comments would be considered in budget discussions. The definition of a program was never revealed. At the March 2 school committee meeting, which was online, the school committee, the work on the anti-racism resolution and the SCAR, which is the Student Coalition Against Racism, program was presented by the curriculum director and the dean of students. The presentations listed the training, guidance from qualified advocates, links to curriculum, social studies curriculum realignment, establishments of social media groups, and recruitment efforts to increase the number of followers, recommended by reading material, et cetera. The presentations were met with enthusiasm by the committee. A member stressed the importance of the program and how necessary it is to provide the students with correct information so that they will be able to continue the effort when they move on to college. I have to assume the town is indirectly picking up the cost for this effort, which is embedded in the curriculum, by simply funding the school budget.
Thirty seconds, sorry.
The school committee chair recommended that the 80-plus people that tuned into the meeting advocate to the town's Board of Selectmen and FinCom. Please, may I continue?
Yes, you can. You've got another minute.
Okay. My concern is that the school district's undertakings has moved far beyond the taxpayer's expectations. While some may celebrate this progress, I question how our town of 3,504 can continue to fund the shift in the overtime window. I understand the advocacy for this and other causes, but I disagree with the town funding the effort to rid the world of evil, bullies, pain, and conflict that has been with us since the beginning of time. These problems will not be solved with an increase in our taxes. It would be solved through actions based on the values of faith, family, and community. Additionally, the media, celebrities, athletes, politicians, NGOs, nonprofits, and corporations provide a wealth of in-your-face advocacy for a variety of causes that do not need to be reinforced by our school funds at the expense of the town.
Tina, I'm going to have to stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion, I think, Ben. Ben, you're next.
All right, I'm just going to speak on a financial level here. I just want to reiterate what I said at the top of the meeting, that even though the figure presented in the motion that was just read is necessary to advance a smooth transition into fiscal '22, the town strongly requests the district to reduce the assessment via all avenues available for fiscal '22, for the fiscal '22 proceeds and the extent of federal funding, as it becomes clear. I mentioned earlier that the increase in the district budget for Essex is high by historical standards at 3.96%. The school budget makes up about 50% of our town's budget, if you exclude water and sewer, which has its own separate accounting. Annually, we are bound by Proposition 2.5, which requires growth in town spending to stay within 2.5%. Simple math illustrates that when half your budget grows by 4%, then the other half, which is your police, fire, town government, library, et cetera, has to offset with very limited growth. We were fortunate this year because we set out the budget season with planning for level services. We limited increases only to cost-of-living adjustments for town employees and really no additional expenditures other than essential and those by which we are contractually bound. The finance committee and Board of Selectmen all agree that managing the town's limited budget when the growth in school cost exceeds 3.5% just doesn't work over time. To be clear, the overall assessment to Manchester and Essex combined increased by 3.5% this year, but the Essex apportionment, which is impacted by enrollment trends and relative property values, ended up at the higher number of 3.96%, in contrast to Manchester at 3.24. This number can swing both favorably and unfavorably to each town. For example, back in fiscal 2017, Essex incurred a 2.28% increase while Manchester incurred 3.70%. To develop a plan on the long-term growth trajectory of school costs and a potential remedy to the volatility in the apportionment of each town's share, we have developed a working group currently composed of the FinCom chairs from Manchester and Essex along with the superintendent and finance director from the district. Our hope is to mitigate the challenges we face as a town in building a budget around a cost component that can be both significant and volatile. I look forward to collaborating with the school committee in this process.
Guy.
I'd like to express the Board of Selectmen's support for the current school assessment as presented in Article 11. It reflects an overall 3.5% increase in the regional school district's assessment and has been adjusted to a 3.96% increase for the town of Essex based on a formula apportioning costs between the two towns. The 3.5% overall increase was discussed and agreed to after discussions and good-faith negotiations between the towns and the school, and in Essex, after being voted on and approved by the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen. The apportionment formula being utilized has been employed in an identical fashion each year since 2009. The calculation is based on three different factors: property values, student enrollment, and town population. As Chairman Buttrick mentioned, changes to these factors have caused variances in the rates of assessments between the two towns from year to year, but over the longer term, they have tended to cancel each other out. Any change to the apportionment formula could only be attained by amending the regional school district agreement between Essex and Manchester by the Sea. We endorse Chairman Buttrick's urging that the school reduce the assessment to the towns if additional federal funding becomes available later in the year. We also share Chairman Buttrick's disappointment. The school committee was unwilling to utilize additional reserves at the current time to lower the assessment. We understand their concern that continued use of reserve funds could have a negative impact on their strong credit rating and borrowing costs. However, we feel the risk could be lessened by utilizing any additional federal funding and by establishing broad spending parameters going forward to prevent overtaxing the town's capacity to fund the schools. Although the increased assessment for fiscal year 2122 can be accommodated in our current town budget, we agree that similar increases are not sustainable in the longer term. Such increases put too great a burden on the town's finances and force us to curtail spending in other critical areas. We strongly endorse the formation of the working group Chairman Buttrick spoke about, made up of the heads of the town finance committees, the district superintendent, and finance director. Its purpose will be to recommend a restructuring of the budget process, allowing for significant input from the towns at the earliest stages in order to establish broad spending targets that are realistic and achievable. It will also discuss establishing school budget contingency funds for each town and the school district, which will be funded annually and used to even out unexpected costs resulting from apportionment of the school assessment. We feel these two steps will fill a critical gap which has existed in the school budgeting process, increasing our ability to plan and reducing the likelihood of unrealistic funding requirements for the towns in the future. Again, the Board supports the adoption of the school funding assessment as presented in Article 11. Thank you.
I think we're going over here to the side. Mark?
Mark Renzi, 86 Southern. I agree with Chairman Buttrick and Selectman Bradford. The years of 2020 and 2021 have been challenging for many: illness, loss of loved ones, and a shutdown of the economy. Thankfully, we're on the upswing with many of these challenges. Economic activity is on the rise, and the government has pushed in about $412 billion in paycheck stimulus to help support the economy. Those payments have reached about 150 million people. As a town, we've also made changes to adapt to the reality we have experienced. Non-real estate tax assessments are down, i.e. meals tax, are down almost 25%, although it's hard to believe it when you try to cross the causeway. In order to adapt to these decreases in town revenues, the finance committee has asked for level spending of all town services after adjusting for contractual increases. Many departments have cut back significantly to address the hardship that this past year has presented. With that backdrop, the school committee has been told that the entire town of Essex has tightened its budget. Taxes in Essex have risen at more than double-digit rates due to two factors: increased mill rates and increased valuations. Taxes are up over 25% from 2015 levels. These increases are linked to higher-than-state-recommended spending in the school budget and two large infrastructure projects: Manchester Memorial School and the Essex Police and Fire Station. Outsize spending by the town ultimately creates adverse selection and loss of diversity in our town as we squeeze out fixed-income residents and those who have struggled with the pandemic. We have analyzed the school budget and have found that increases have been particularly high in certain categories. We have also prepared a benchmarking analysis with the assistance of DESI from the state. Some categories have significantly higher increases on relative cohorts for benchmarking from the '17 and '18 cohort to the '21, '22 proposed budget. Principals and assistant principals have had a 25.7% increase over that period of time. Classroom teachers have had a 14.4% increase. Special education teachers have had a 33% increase. Although there have been some offsets to these costs, the overall school budget has increased from the same time period from $24.7 million to $28.2 million, all while the student enrollment continues to decline. For this year, given the economic backdrop, there have been discussions for a more modest increase to the budget: 3% instead of 4%, which reflects a $280,000 reduction in budget of $28 million, which has been met with resistance. We have discussed since the first draft of the budget in January to modify the budget to a 3% increase or use of school budget reserves. There are many ways to achieve efficiency by not changing the curriculum. We have asked the school committee to present ways to reduce costs without cutting curriculum to adjust for our economic reality, yet we have received no such response. Furthermore, the school is asking for a 4% increase in its budget with fewer enrolled students. One may ask, what is the root of this, and how is the school performing in general? We have an excellent school system. It used to be top 10, it's now in the top 23, still excellent. Enrollment has been declining from 1,441 in FY '16, which is in your materials here, to 1,283. Based on benchmarking data, your per pupil cost has increased at 5.3% when the state costs have been increasing at 3.5%. And if this budget is adopted, it is a compounded increase of 6%. The school budget is just plain too high. The budgeting committee needs to be more collaborative. They have been collaborative, but by way of example, the amount of changes since January has been $20,000 in terms of collaboration. That's just the hard facts. We need better collaboration to address these budgetary issues. I think what Guy has spelled out and what Chairman Buttrick has spelled out calls for better collaboration, not just a dictation of pushing through a budget.
Thirty seconds.
If we continue on this trajectory, for someone paying $15,000 in taxes, in four more years, you'll be paying $19,300 in taxes. Just be ready for that. We need better collaboration. The school committee needs to engender a more cohesive approach with other town committees regarding spending. We all benefit from schools, directly and indirectly. This is not a strike against education. This is a reality check on community spending, where more than half of the town does not have school-aged children. I'll quote two people much smarter than me. "Education is the most powerful weapon we can use to change the world," Nelson Mandela. And furthermore, MLK said, "Change does not roll in on the wheels of inevitability but comes through continuous struggle." Thank you.
I think John was next.
Hi, Rob Fitzgibbon, 18 Main Street. With Article 11, the assembled voters have to decide if they are comfortable with a 3.5%, 4% district budget increase and a 3.96% apportionment rate at a time when all the other town departments were asked to stay level funded. I'm not comfortable with that.
Hi, Michelle Dyer, 18 R County Road. So I'm on the finance committee and the PTO, but I'm speaking as a private citizen right now. First of all, from a financial perspective, we're a town that has 90% of our land use dedicated to residential, 10% to commercial. So we have a disproportionate amount of burden on our citizens to carry the weight of expenses. And as some of my colleagues have mentioned, that there's just a reality of how much money we have to spend in this town. Having said that, I personally believe really strongly, and I think those of you who know me have know, that I've long advocated for investment in education. I feel like the process of the budget-making this year seemed a little bit disjointed, and so hopefully we can do better in future years. I know we've done great in previous years, so I know we can do it. But generally, I'm supportive of this article. I think we got lucky this year because we were able to manage costs in other areas. But going forward, we do have to take a hard look at what we can afford in this town while also making education a really strong priority. And then finally, I'd like to say that I'm delighted that anti-racism is being taught in the schools. In my humble opinion, that is a family value.
Paul Panoria, 57 Grove Street. I would just like to finish what Tina Lane started. Money spent on these efforts is money that cannot fund the town's safety and security of its citizens and infrastructure, which I believe is the purpose of the town government. Taxes are a burden that limits the family's spending choices. The town should be thoughtful where those dollars go. I appreciate the effort of our town to scrutinize the spending of each department during this difficult year. The school district should be held to the same scrutiny when discussing the budget. One more comment: Since we are paying for this and it is so important, please post the K-12 lesson plans online so that the entire town can be enlightened. Thank you.
I'm going to go over here.
Kate Koch-Sonquist, I'm on the school committee, but I'm speaking as an individual right now. In July, I wrote a letter to the school committee requesting that they sign the Massachusetts State Association of School Committees' anti-racist resolution and evaluate the curriculum with an anti-racist lens. There were over 300 signatures on this letter, and there was not a single voice of dissent at the meeting during which the school committee voted to sign this statewide resolution. I'm a mom, I'm raising two white boys in a predominantly white community. They will go out into the world with more privilege than their BIPOC peers, and it is my hope to raise them in a community that teaches them to recognize bias and injustice and stand against it. I applaud our educators who are helping us to raise activists. To my knowledge, this has cost our district nothing.
Hold on a second. I think you're on. How about here? You can stay there. I think you just turned it on.
I know you don't want to hear this. I've always supported the schools. I'm a former member of the School Committee. I would like to applaud and support the efforts of our elected officials to try and rein in the costs, the direction that the school department is going. And in saying that, I always say I always supported the schools, but I think that if a portion of us here today did not vote against this budget, I want it to pass, but we have to send a message that it can't go on like this. If we vote, like, say this is a unanimous vote in favor, the message to the folks in Manchester and the district is, our representatives are speaking for themselves, that they don't represent any level of support from the populace and the taxpayers in Essex. So I'm gonna vote no, and I hope that other people will join me in doing that. Not that we're against education, but to make it that there's some bullets in the guns of our officials when they go to negotiate. Thank you.
Annie.
Annie Cameron Pickering Street. I'm not on School Committee anymore, as of Monday.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I am part of the Financial Subcommittee, or I was part of the Financial Subcommittee, and we have been meeting with town officials from Essex and Manchester for years. We meet about every six weeks. We talk about what our budget challenges are every year. We have negotiated in good faith. We had a meeting with the Town of Essex, I think, three or four weeks ago, where the Town of Essex said we can manage the 3.96. So we gave our word, as the Town of Essex, to the Town of Manchester, to the district, that we can handle this budget. We are well aware of the fact that the Town of Essex wants us to reduce the apportionment. We have a lot of uncertainty in terms of what we're gonna get back from the federal government. We're waiting for that. The Town of Essex has CARES dollars and Ursa dollars that are still up in the air. So I resent the implication that we are not working collaboratively, because we are. The Town of Essex Finance Committee didn't meet in April. I don't know of any town finance committee that doesn't meet in the month of April and then in May throws this at us. If we don't pass the school budget, my understanding is revert to the budget from last year. Is that correct? Avi, where's Avi? Yeah.
Brandon can probably answer that.
So we're, you know, the difference, I think, was $40,000. If the Town of Essex wants us to reduce by $40,000, that's $120,000 that we have to decrease our budget, because we have to account for Manchester's portion of that 40. So theirs is 2/3 to our 1/3. So I want you to support this budget. We are coming out of a pandemic year. This has been an awful year for the district. We meet all the time to try to figure out how we're gonna pay for all this stuff and deliver a good education. We are delivering a good product. This is an excellent school district, and this is a budget that is reflective of what we're dealing with. And you know what? It's not going away. These budget challenges are ongoing. We have been cutting every year to get to where we are now. There's very little to cut. I don't know... That's enough. I will tell you, this is a good budget. You should support it. We have excellent schools, and the people that work for you on the School Committee are credible, very responsible people, and if you listen to our meetings, you'd know that.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I think it's important to get the answer to that question, because that's not exactly how it happens. And would you like to recognize Town Council?
I would. Greg, would you like to address that question?
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. Good afternoon. My name is Greg Corbo, Town Council for the Town of Essex, and I'd just like to take a moment to describe what happens procedurally if you do not vote in favor of the school budget. Because you are a member of a regional school district, both towns have to approve the budget that is certified by the Regional School District Committee. If either town does not vote to approve it, then the matter goes back to the School Committee to reconsider its budget and to recertify either the same number or a different number. And at that point, it goes back to each of the member towns, and each of the member towns has another town meeting, at which time they have an opportunity to either pass the amended budget or not. If either town does not pass the amended budget, then there is a third step of a supertown meeting in which both towns together have to reconsider that budget. And finally, if the budget does not pass at that supertown meeting, then the matter goes to the state, and you're given a month-to-month budget that is based on what the budget was in the prior fiscal year.
Thank you, Greg. I think we're over here.
Again, with the backdrop of fully supportive education, excellent school system, but we're in the middle of a pandemic, and we have been working since January 12 to reduce the budget, and it's been reduced by $20,000. So we are working collaboratively. There's no doubt. But there has been intransigence from the School Committee to work with us, to find other ways to rein in costs, and you have heard it across many citizens here. So it's no doubt that they're working in good faith, but despite the fact that we have asked for, as a member of the Finance Committee and Strategic Planning Committee, despite the fact that we have asked for clarity on what can be done, we have not received a response. So we can say we've been collaborative. That's true. We can say we have excellent schools. We can all be supportive of education, but we need to make sure that there are checks and balances and that this process is done in a much more disciplined way with other committees. Thank you.
I think, Ben, you were next.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to address what Annie had said, that we have been meeting collaboratively. Going back to January, though, I mean, we've made requests to reduce the assessment, and then it goes to a School Committee vote, and it has not been approved. So I just want to be clear that we've repeatedly made the ask.
Ginny?
Virginia Antel, 16 Maple Street. I'm your town accountant, and let me tell you, I believe the School Committee has worked increasingly, increasingly diligently this year. We had a COVID year that everybody was asked to not spend, and they've tried their best to not spend. We've had so many changes in how we can report COVID activity that I'm surprised the School Committee hasn't walked away from their jobs. It has been increasingly difficult. They've said that they will work. Why aren't we listening? Why does it always have to be division? They said they'll work towards it. Let's have some faith and give them a chance. Please, let's pass this budget.
Any further discussion? I don't see anyone at the mic, so I think we'll move on to a vote on Article 11. All those in favor of Article 11, raise your card. All those opposed? I'm gonna need a count. I can't make a call on that, so I'm gonna need the tellers for the sections, please. We're gonna have to have the...
People are not... Are they on the hot top? Sitting in a chair.
If you are voting, you need to be sitting in a chair on the hot top. If you... There's people up the back there that are standing, and I need you to be on the hot top, sitting. And there's chairs. Are we all on a chair?
There's only a chair. No. If we have to sit on the hot top, that's fine.
Okay, so all those... I'm gonna have you raise your card. You're gonna keep them up until I ask you to put them down, so the tellers can actually count the cards. So all those in favor of Article 11, please raise your card.
286.
286.
They just can't... It's very difficult to count when they're standing over like that. They could be in a row. Yeah, but it'd be easier for the tellers to count.
So if this is 260, I just need...
286.
286, I just need 134.
Isn't this just a majority?
Majority, yeah. So I need half.
That's the nice thing about the whole night, huh? So they keep it down to 10.
Yeah. What are the kids doing? You guys good? It's coming close. There's more over here.
We're in agreement in Section 2 that there was 48. 48.
Okay, so we've got a final count on the...
No, we need one more.
Oh, sorry. What do you mean, on the nose?
We have three sections.
Oh, we do. Sorry. There's three sections. Try not to let that happen again.
160.
So the motion passes. We have 160 yeas. We have 268. It's just a majority. So the motion passes. Do I have to take a note? Okay, so we're gonna count the nose as well. I'm sorry. So all those voting no on Article 11, please raise your card. Should be like 108. Somewhere around 108.
66.
Plus 60.
1. Oh, sorry, 60.
And she said 60, right?
She said 60. So that's 160.
Yep.
286.
So they're over here that they need just this one last section.
So half is 1.3. So no, it passed. 59. So 88, so it passed.
So the vote... You can put your cards down. Sorry. The yeas, 160. The nays, 88. The motion passes. And thank you. Thank you for reminding me, Greg. Before we go to Article 12, I want to recognize Senator Bruce Tarr. He's been sitting in the sun in his nice suit. Sorry, but I wanted to get through the article. Thanks for all you do, Bruce. Article 12.
I, Ruth Perrine, move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $218,080 to pay the town's share of the operating and capital costs of the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2021.
Is there a second? Discussion?
No discussion.
None? All those in favor of Article 12, please raise your card. Any noes? Motion passes. Article 13.
Good afternoon. Wesley Burnham, Chairman of the Planning Board, 22 County Road. I, Wesley Burnham, move that the town vote to amend Chapter 6 of the Town Zoning Bylaws by adding new Section 6-15 titled Essex Downtown Zoning District. Has set forth in Article 13 of the annual town meeting warrant with the following change: Section 6-15.6, permitted accessory structures, subsection A, accessory buildings or structures, subsection B, which reads as follows in the annual town meeting warrant, B, maximum permitted height of 15 feet. And we want that change to read B, maximum height of 25 feet. That was pointed out and recognized at the...
Can I need a second to the motion? If that's... Sorry. Is there a second to that? Discussion? Sorry.
All right, sorry about that. That was pointed out at the public hearing. It was pretty much an oversight on our part. We were concentrating on the real meat of the whole problem, of the whole article. We felt 25 feet is reasonable for someone to put a 2-cab garage up with a little storage about it. So that's the reason for the change on the floor here.
Okay. Any further discussion on the article?
I can do a little bit on it. Thank you. All right, this article is a fruition of six long hard years from 2015 actively working on this. Prior to that, it was discussed on the Long-Term Planning Committee as well as the Strategic Planning Committee. 2015 actually changed or set the tone to a little more important than we were before. There was a case of Gale versus Gloucester relative to how non-conforming users were treated, and it has changed the way that we have to deal with those. And in light of that, this is actually reducing the Planning Board's power and causing... not causing, requiring more notifications for things that will occur or can occur on the current non-conforming lots, which in the area that we've drawn out is roughly 84, 85% of the lots are in a non-conforming status. So part of this is to build a new box with new trip lines, such that if your neighbor wants to put a deck on, extend it towards your property line. At the new sideline setbacks, it will trigger either a special permit process or a variance process, which you'll be notified. There'll be a public hearing. You'll be able to put input on it. As of right now, virtually any nonconformity can be increased by the Planning Board with just a quorum of four. No notifications, nothing. So this actually resets the box in the downtown area. The other thing it does do, which is part of the long-term planning and the strategic planning, as well as the Economic Development Committee and the Housing Coalition are all in favor of, is it permits by right the ability to have a mixed use in the downtown area. Currently, there's... I don't know exactly how many, but there's currently a lot of uses in that configuration which are not permitted, and we can't create any more. So this is actually a part of trying to encourage some additional, what would be relatively low-priced living accommodations for either our young people or older people to move out of their houses into a smaller unit or whatever. Those other committees have all endorsed passing this primarily because of the potential that it may provide for additional low-cost or lower-cost housing. All right, this article is a fruition of six long hard years from 2015 actively working on this. Prior to that, it was discussed on the Long-Term Planning Committee, as well as the Strategic Planning Committee. 2015 actually changed or set the tone to a little more important than we were before. There was a case of Gale versus Gloucester relative to how non-conforming users were treated, and it has changed the way that we have to deal with those. And in light of that, this is actually reducing the planning board's power and causing, not causing, requiring more notifications for things that will occur or can occur on the current non-conforming lots, which in the area that we've drawn out is roughly 84%, 85% of the lots are in a non-conforming status. So part of this is to build a new, a new box with new trip lines such that if your neighbor wants to put a deck on, extend it towards your property line. At the new sideline setbacks, it will trigger either a special permit process or a variance process, which you'll be notified, there'll be a public hearing, you'll be able to put input on it. As of right now, virtually any non-conformity can be increased by the planning board with just a quorum of four. No notifications, nothing. So this actually resets the box in the downtown area. The other thing it does do, which is part of the long-term planning and the strategic planning, as well as the Economic Development Committee and the Housing Coalition are all in favor of, is it permits by right the ability to have a mixed use in the downtown area. Currently, there's, I don't know exactly how many, but there's currently a lot of uses in that, in that configuration, which are not permitted. And we can't create anymore. So this is actually a part of trying to encourage some additional, what would be relatively low-priced living accommodations for either our young people or older people to move out of their houses into a smaller unit or whatever. Those other committees have all endorsed passing this primarily because of the potential that it may provide for additional low-cost or lower-cost housing. Regarding the industrial, there's been some concerns that it's going to create business opportunities and we're going to be overwhelmed with Costcos and Home Depots and whatnot. That can, that can occur right now. All right? This does not encourage any of that. It does, however, prevent any further heavy industrial, the industrial Class A will be outlawed. I'm not sure outlawed's the right word, but prohibited, how's that? Prohibited in the downtown area forever. All right, so that's one advantage. Guess I'll quit there. I mean, I, I could go on for hours. I've, I've spoken with individuals and it usually takes about an hour to an hour and a half to get through the whole thing and try to explain it, and I haven't got that kind of time, so.
Wesley, before you leave the mic and I go to Lisa, does the planning board support this article?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And everything was posted?
Yes. Planning Board recommendation for this article was unanimously voted to pass at one of our regular scheduled meetings.
Thank you. Lisa?
Lisa O'Donnell, 15 Island Road, I'm a member of the planning board. I just wanted to touch on the whole bylaw concept and reiterate that it's a two-thirds vote to pass any of these articles. And this one, as Wesley has said, is something the planning board's been working on for a long time, and I think it's a positive step forward for the town and any zoning efforts here. And what I would like to remind people is that there's a lot of moving parts in any one of these bylaws with dimensions and setbacks and all sorts of other provisions. And a lot of times I hear people pick on one or two small parts of it, and, and I guess I'm here asking you to not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. This is a step forward, and even if there's one little part of it that you might not agree with, you have to look at the big picture, that it's a positive thing for the town and something that's going to be an asset in the future, and not to just vote against it because there's one little thing you don't like. If you like 90% of it and not 10% of it, you're still, you still should vote for it because of that reason, because there's more good than bad for it, so, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go over here.
Michael Gin, 26 John Weis Avenue. I'm against this article. Correct me if I'm wrong, planning board, but I, I think it gives people who have non-conforming lots more rights and ability to use their property, do different things with it opposed to those who have conforming lots. If the idea is to increase the aspect of housing, then perhaps other areas of the zoning bylaws should be loosened up to allow people with conforming lots to do more with their property.
Was there a question in there? Did you?
There was a question, if, if I'm wrong, in regards to non-conforming lots having more ability to use their lot than conforming lots. Now, I would like that to be addressed by the planning board.
I thought, that's why I asked.
Otherwise, I'll stand, I'll stand corrected.
Okay. Someone want to answer that question, or?
The reality of what's occurring with the current non-conforming lots in Essex, based on the court finding of Gale versus Gloucester, is this bylaw actually puts new limitations in and reduces, in some ways, the ability for non-conforming lots to be retasked or reutilized. Now, that being said, the other thing it does do is it sets some new guidelines for as right, which makes up to the new standards. Sidelines, front yard, whatnot, will be a matter of as of right, rather than a finding by the four members of the planning board, that we can allow them to do virtually anything right out to the property line now. So it actually moves the boundaries back to where the neighbors would be informed and have some input if they wanted to go beyond those. I don't know if that cleared it up.
Thank you.
Betsy Ridge-Madson, 22 Saganese Road. I'm wondering if this article can be subdivided so that people could address what Lisa addressed. If you don't like all of it, you can vote for what you do like.
I don't.
I think it could probably be done by amendment.
I think we'd have to do it, I don't see a way to bifurcate the amendment, but maybe, I mean, the motion or the article, but if you want someone...
But one could come up with an amendment to omit a piece.
Anyone can come up with an amendment, yes, as long as it's in scope.
I just wondered if somebody could explain it a little bit better, exactly what we're doing here. We just got back into town last night, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to read it, but there's that outlined area of downtown, what, basically, what are we, what are we doing? What are we changing to that area?
Did she identify herself? Could you identify yourself so she can have it for the record? Ed?
I'm not a member of the planning board, but I, I have a view of this, and I think I understand what's being proposed. Before zoning occurred in Essex, there was a lot of building that occurred in the downtown area, and houses were built very close to the property lines or to the, and in proximity to each other. Some properties were converted partially or totally to commercial properties, and then the town passed the overall zoning that we have currently. That placed different property owners in that area, or that had non-conforming lots, in different legal positions than people that lived right next door. So in other words, if you had a pre-existing property that was too close to the property lines and was, and was non-conforming, and your neighbor, who also had a, a non-conforming lot, wanted to build on his property exactly the same kind of building structure that you have, he wouldn't be allowed to do it without going through all these, you know, filing for a 642 finding from the planning board, and if it was commercial, or I think more than two-family, they would have to get variances from the appeals board as well. So my view is what's trying to, the, the basic goal of this bylaw is to make legal mostly what already has existed for years and allow further development of the same type that, this is what we've got. The same type of development in the downtown area where it's adequately served by sewer, and it's more likely that it can be responsible development than in other places in town where the conditions are different and more rural. That's how I see it. I'm in favor of it, thank you.
Someone over here?
Hi, my name is John Havikhurst, and I'm at 10 Winthrop Street. One of the streets that has been included into this district, which I feel creates an unfair burden on our neighborhood in that district, the proposed district. And I feel that Maple Street, Pickering Street, Winthrop Street, and one side of Western Avenue was actually put in after the Harriman study. So I don't know how you can have a study about houses that are from the 1889, 1886, historically valuable houses in that area, that are like a substantially smaller type of home, but they actually have their own setbacks based on when this town was created. And the town, people that created this town knew better. I think they knew a lot about what they were doing, and there hasn't been any problem in that area, in that neighborhood. Okay? We haven't had a, I mean, there's been some, like, different types of building, I agree, over the, over the, the, that long period of time. But I think it should have been included in this Harriman study, and I think that the fact that the Winthrop Street, Pickering, and Maple Street creates a densely populated burden on those houses, because if you expand the, the housing out to, closer to the setbacks to six feet, you will have more density. You can put a 40-foot-tall warehouse in there according to this, which, according to Mr. Burnham, he probably would say that you could do that before. But we're talking about mixed use, so that we have like coffee shops, liquor stores, possibly barber shops, you know, anything that you can dream up downstairs, right? And that's legal. But where's the parking for all this? So like the individual houses have to put up parking for each of the additional rooms or bedrooms, so like, or the apartments has to have a, a place for a car. So when you have a street that is, and I don't know if they actually even came over to Winthrop Street and talked to us. They didn't talk to me, they didn't talk to my neighbors, but a street on Winthrop Street, which has one sidewalk, it's 23 feet wide. 23 feet wide, the average car length is seven feet, so if you multiply that, you know, the actual space between cars, driving, and the parked cars, is 35 feet on a 23-foot street. So you're talking about no two-way access on the street, you're talking about, like, no, like, if you're parking on both sides of the street. So this impacts this neighborhood, like, so, like, it's incredibly, and like, nobody cares. I care. Yeah, Ed Neil, you can laugh, you know, laugh. It's funny, isn't it? Well, I live there, and I, I care about our community, and I care about this town, okay? I care about my neighbors, I care about the way that this town has not included this process. So I really want to have, I, I want you to vote no on it. I think it's important to vote no on it, because in the next article, we're going to be talking about postponing commercial for two years. So why aren't we doing that for this area, too? We should be doing it for both. We should, like, either take out those streets, or just cancel this and, and basically vote for the, you know, the postponement for two years, so it can be properly integrated. Well, thank you anyways.
I think it's still over here. Got two people over here, over here?
Hi, Lynn Havikhurst from 10 Winthrop Street also. As Lisa said, you know, don't nitpick a little part of this, but there's actually this little part of it really affects our residential neighborhood. I'm opposed to including Winthrop Street, Maple Street, both sides of Pickering Street, and the eastern side of Western Avenue in the Essex Downtown Zoning District. If you're unfamiliar with those streets, nearly all of those properties in our neighborhood are currently residential, and there are several home occupations as well. It's a multi-generational family community. We, in our current zoning bylaws, there are setback requirements, and mixed use is not allowed. We do not want reduced setbacks, we do not want to be zoned for increased density and mixed use as a right. Article 13 invites development in our residential neighborhood. As, well, if, if Article 13 passes, a neighboring, neighboring property can build a 40-foot-high storage building with a special permit, five feet from your side yard or rear yard. Homeowners will have no say in what goes in. Please don't give developers the right to design and change our neighborhoods. In closing, as John mentioned, if Article 13 passes, the downtown district, including our streets of Winthrop, Pickering, Maple, and Western Avenue, are excluded from Article 14's two-year moratorium. So our neighborhood will not be, have the same protection and thoughtful planning that the rest of the town will receive. Anyone who knows us knows that we support the Essex business community, but please listen to the people who care about their community that this affects, and vote no on Article 13. Thank you.
Still over here, I think. Yep.
Hey, everybody, Rob Fitzgibbon, 18 Main Street again. I've been here for two decades. Now, every year, somebody says, "We have no zoning, ah, we have to save Essex's landscape." And every year, the planning board proposes a zoning district or an amendment, and it gets shot down by a death by a thousand cuts. So it's just sort of like, it feels like Groundhog Day all over again. Look, I am all for this. This encourages building downtown and encourages higher density, which means economic activity, which means we can pay for the, for our stuff, like the school. But I would love somebody from the planning board to stand up, and please give us all a Essex zoning 101, like, primer, in like 30 seconds, like, do we have zoning? Do we not have zoning? What exactly do we have? And then give us also a taste-grade, less-filling, like, benefit statement as to why this is, this, this bylaw, or this article is a good idea. Thank you.
Does anyone want to answer that question, or I move over to here? Go ahead, Laura.
Laura Doyle, 24A Maple Street. Of course, you've heard, I'm one of the effective, affected areas in this vote. I've lived in, in Essex most of my life, and my relatives have as well. Some of the houses are very old, and a lot of you have kids that have trick-or-treated in our area. How many of you have had kids trick-or-treating in this Maple Street, Winthrop Street, Pickering Street area, okay? This is a residence, and I, I really would like somebody to help me understand why these new streets were added to this downtown area. I haven't heard a good reason yet, and I'd really like to understand why we decided to make this area commercial, mixed use, whatever we're going to call it, I don't know all the legal words, when it's primarily residential and it's been residential for many years. It's one of the first areas in Essex, not very, very old buildings, but a lot of very old buildings. So I'd like to better understand why you chose these four areas and why it has to be that way. I mean, we have kids in the area, kids playing in the area, we've had people in these neighborhoods for years. I'm in support of the rest of the, the article, but I'm, I guess, I just can't understand why we're moving these residential areas into it. It just doesn't make sense to me, so unless there's an amendment, and maybe I'll try to write one, I'm voting no. Thank you.
Jane Gin, 26 John Weis Avenue. I guess I'm getting a better idea of exactly what we're doing here and why. I guess it means that we want to increase businesses downtown, and there are some non-conforming lots that have had permission or, or have more than, say, an apartment and a, maybe a storefront downstairs, and there are other conforming, non-conforming lots, that at this point, if they wanted to do the same thing, they'd have to go through a rigorous appeal board and just, you know, a lot of red tape. So I guess my feeling is, why are we, if we've got some non-conforming that we've allowed to be non-conforming, because there's nothing we can really do about it, why would we want to change even more? we want to change even more non-conforming lots to be more of non-conforming? And then there's all the rest of the lots in town. We have a property up on John Weis Avenue. We have almost 900 feet of frontage and we're very limited as to what we can do. We can't have any more than three residencies on that 14 acres of property that we have because of that law. And so it doesn't seem fair that that's going to be allowed downtown, but not be allowed in some of the other areas. That's just the other, the other side of the coin.
I think you're up, Wes.
I'm going to try with the zoning 101. Just as a brief history, and I'm going to be brief. Zoning was adopted in 1959 in Essex. Before that, there was nothing, zero. 59 to 72, they had 15,000 square foot lots and 50-foot frontages. 1972, or actually for four or five years ahead of that, they attempted to rewrite the zoning into something a little more conventional. Over the years, I had several conversations with some of the ones that were on that board. That was the first attempt to try to do district zoning in Essex and it failed because of what Ed was talking about, how we got to where we're at. Things just got built and it happened. And everything is basically sprinkled around town. So 1972 is where we've got the base for the bylaws we have in place now. And we opted, or they opted at that time, to go with land-use zoning restrictions and put specific requirements on if you wanted to have a business. You needed so much area, so much frontage and sidelines, a whole nine yards. All right. That's basically how we got to where we're at. Through that time, the clearances or the sidelines have changed some. The whole downtown area, for the most part, especially the older houses, have been non-compliant with current zoning, basically since 1972. We dealt with it. Not to get into the details of Gale versus Gloucester, but that changed how we had been dealing with it. For, I've been on the board almost 30 years. During that time, if someone wanted to increase or try to rebuild a house or add a deck or re-task it or whatever, they would have, if they were going to increase the non-conformity, the pre-existing non-conformity, we were sending them to the zoning board of appeals. Well, the court basically stated, no, planning board, do your job. And under Chapter 48, Section 5 or 6, I forget which, delegates us to make a determination that what they want to do is not substantially more detrimental than what is existing. And that only requires four members of the planning board to approve it. No notifications, no chance for any public input, nothing. What this does is it sets a new standard for, we'll use the six-foot example that Mr. Havikhurst referenced too. Sidelines will go to six feet. Now, by a matter of right, they could go down to the six-foot level, all right? If they were going to breach that, now that triggers the zoning board of appeals. You'd get notified, the neighbors would get notified, there'd be public notices, public hearings and a whole decision process. Now, the neighborhoods would have an opportunity to weigh in rather than just having four of us make a determination that it's not going to be more detrimental, period, done. See you later, bye. And you'll know about the construction when the excavator moves in. All right. I'll leave that one alone for a second.
So that was a response to a question. Is you still on 101 or is you going to be talking about the article?
No, I'm going to try to respond to some of the comments that Mr. Havikhurst made. Can't even read my notes. All right. He mentioned a building height of 40 feet. The building height is currently 35 feet. We put a caveat in that it could go to 40 primarily because of the causeway area being in the FEMA flood zone. So realistically, a good example is the brewery that went in. That brewery got raised up approximately five feet, I believe, to get it out of the FEMA flood zone. So in order to allow a normal building height, we put the option in that if it's required, they can automatically get to go to 40. 35 is the standard, that's where we've been at since at least 72, and effectively that remains. But there is a caveat. If they've got to raise the entire building to comply with the FEMA flood zone regs, then we have that capability to allow them to do it via special permit, public hearing and a decision. Parking was mentioned. This area is still subject to the balance of the Section 6 bylaws and that includes parking. Off-street parking is a necessity, it's required, so that any improvements or changes to the property are still subject to the balance of a lot of the other rules that exist elsewhere. Referring back to Harriman. Harriman was the consulting group that we hired back in 2016. They worked a couple of years looking at a specific area and collecting data. What we were looking for was more the data for what existed now, and they gave it to us. They also gave a recommendation of what they would like to see the district rules be. We did not agree with quite a few of those recommendations. We started with their recommendations. Zero, they wanted to go to zero on sideline clearances, they wanted to go to zero on front yards. There was a host of others. But we went through and looked at every single one of them, discussed them in perpetuity. Almost every single meeting, we'd pick another section and move on. And we were discussing, thinking about it and then going back. And we did that for the past three odd years. I guess that's enough. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Beth Weston and I live on Pickering Street. And I do not want my street to be included in the downtown area. It's only a block long and already we have a dentist who I visit regularly, so I'm glad he's there. And then we have a mixed-use building with a masseuse and then an artist in resident and Erba is just around the corner. So we have plenty of traffic on our little street and I want it to remain the way it is, a residential area mostly. Thank you.
Mike Dyer, 9 Indian Rock Lane. Wesley and I and I think a few other people here were on that long-term planning committee 12, 13, 14 years ago. And two of the biggest issues we looked at at that time facing the town were the viability of the business environment in town and also the availability of housing, a variety of housing for residents of the town, especially young residents trying to get started. This article seems to me to address both of those things pretty square on in, you know, in what's called the downtown district. The article is very similar to something that was on the warrant two years ago, which narrowly failed. And I believe the Havikhursts and others in that affected residential neighborhood raised the same objections at that point. We, back in Eli, the long-term planning committee days, we had drawn a map that essentially included the causeway access extended as that business development. I think if the planning board sees fit, or they have seen fit, I guess, to include these residential streets, they should really explain what the thinking was. If not, I'd really like to see the thing amended to exclude them. And I see that Ed is about to do that, so I hope that turns the trick. Thank you.
Jennifer Tolo, 49 Martin Street. I motion to move the amendment forward.
I've got two people still standing, so I'm going to wait. Thanks. I think Ed, you're up.
I, Edward Neal, move that Article 13 be amended by deleting Winthrop Street, Maple Street, Pickering Street and the east side of Western Ave from the district map within the article and the provisions thereof.
Sir, is there a second? Before we have discussion, Greg, I have a question on where we're referring also to a map. Do I need a redrawn map as part of that motion? So I have a question for the person that made the motion to amend. Ed, I have a question for you. Would you be willing to add to that, that leaving it to the discretion of the town clerk to redraw the map as you have described?
Absolutely.
Okay. Now I'll take a second to that motion.
Second.
Discussion. On the amendment.
This is Laura Doyle again. I support the amendment. Thank you, Ed.
More discussion about the amendment now, the main article, we're on the motion to amend.
Hi, Nick Royal, 6 Winthrop Street. Actually, I would not want the amendment, this amendment, to go through. I think we need some clarity. This has been worked on very hard for a long time. We've got a lot of, you know, non-conforming lots that need to be brought into conformity. So I'm actually very keen, with all due respect to my fellow residents on Winthrop, Pickering and Maple, I would like to see this amendment fail and I'd like to see the general motion succeed.
I don't recall, I think, I don't know who was first, sorry.
Nika White.
Ginny, go ahead. Ladies before gentlemen.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Jeff. Virginia Antel, 16 Maple Street. I'm against this amendment. I'd like to hear one more time from Wesley. What do we get and what are we giving up? And I think if those two things can be answered, we can do away with the amendment, move forward.
Any more discussion? You want to address that, Wes?
I will try briefly.
Okay.
It is, it's a complicated issue for the people that want to remove Pickering Street, Maple Street, whatnot. Anything that could be done under the amendment can be done right now, all right? So in that respect, you're not really gaining anything, except we've got trigger points now which will mandate your notification of at least some of the projects that may or may not occur as we try to utilize the already developed property in town better over the next 25 years. I sat down with Mr. Havikhurst for an hour and a half trying to explain, so to try to do it in two minutes up here is virtually impossible, but the one thing you do gain is the exclusion of any industrial A-type properties. That'll be forbidden in that, in that particular zone. It is allowable right now. Somebody wanted to buy enough property, they could put in a business under the industrial A, run a 24-hour assembly plant, and that can, that can occur right now. So we're just trying to actually build in trip points so the neighbors, that may be affected by some project coming. We don't know of any. I don't expect any huge building boon, so to speak, but at least they'd have notification and the possibility for some input. I hope that helps.
John, go ahead.
John Guerin, Belcher Street. On April 14th, the public hearing, I spoke up about the same issue and this came up last year as well, when, oh, the last time this was before town meeting. And the fact that you could still have home occupations, that doesn't, is not going to be affected by this bylaw at all. I think what most people are worried about is that this is turning a residential area into a commercial area, which is what I was against in the public hearing, and the fact of mixed uses. So I think the bylaw is actually a good bylaw for downtown and for all the reasons Wes has pointed out. But by just taking and removing it from these streets, which is what I advocated at the public hearing, or some other method, I think we should be amending Ed's article, if Ed's willing, to say, we will be in part of the downtown district, but we're not going to be part of the mixed-use part of it or the commercial part of it. So we keep residential districts residential. Residential, there's no question those streets are residential. You can go all over town and say, Belcher Street, Choate Street, whatever, they're residential streets. I don't know why it keeps coming back or it kept coming back with the same streets in here. I don't think they belong in here either, but I think there's a middle ground on this where we can pass the downtown district and for once, Essex to actually say, this is strictly residential, other than the home occupations. So Ed, I don't know if you're willing to amend it to say that, no business, but that's what I'm asking.
He's shaking his head. So we're going to go over to the right?
Thanks, Ed, for amending this. Sorry for getting on you. And I'm for the amendment of the article. I would like to see Winthrop, Maple, Pickering and the west side of Western Ave. So I'm for this.
Okay. Betsy? He's coming back. Hold on one second. Try it now. Try that now.
Betsy Ridge-Madsen, 22 Saginaw Road. I think it's important to approve this amendment. One of the things that you get by approving it right now is that it will push us, if we do the next article, it will push this section of residential area into the moratorium. So we can then discuss whether it's residential or whatever else is going to happen. But it would, if we pass this today as an amendment to take out those four streets, that will push that into the moratorium. Thank you.
I think we're back over to the right and then we'll go to you.
Hi, Lynn Havikhurst, 10 Winthrop Street. I agree with this amendment. Thank you, Ed Neal. In response to Wesley Burnham, I just wanted to say that my understanding where they're touting this as a benefit, that you will be notified if a property owner wants to go beyond their setbacks. We have setbacks in our current bylaws and to reduce those setbacks does not seem like a benefit to me. Thank you.
Lisa.
Can I respond to that one particularly?
You sure can. Hold on, Lisa.
I just want to clarify. Currently, those, using the sideline setbacks, those buildings or properties that are not in compliant with today's standards are considered pre-existing non-conforming. Because of that, they only need the permission of the planning board, four members, to okay them to do virtually anything right out to the sideline now. This is actually restricting the amount of is actually restricting the amount of horsepower that the planning board has, and it will force certain items to notify the neighbors, so you're, at least you're aware that your neighbor is trying to do something that you may have an opinion on. As of right now, there's no requirement for any notifications of anybody around a current non-conforming use, and if they wanna expend that use, break clean out to the property line. All it takes is four members of the planning board to okay it, and it's done. And you'll find out from your neighbor when the excavator starts digging the foundation. I don't know how well else to say it.
Lisa?
On the amendment, I'm not sure what Pamela is drawing. It would strike me, if you're including Winthrop and Pickering and Maple, then you would want to include the houses on the western side of Martin Street. So across from Town Hall, that, those few houses along there, that kind of falls into that same group, so.
I think it's gonna go on address, I think, I'm guessing.
To Pickering or to Main?
At Main, right?
If they're on, if they're on, I'm not, this is technical for me, but if the address is on Main Street.
Not Main, Martin.
Right.
This is the Martin, 'cause you're, you're, the amendment is, and I defer to anyone who's proposing the amendment, but when, when I look at the map, and you pull out Winthrop, and you pull out Pickering, you, would, it would strike me that there are houses that face on Martin, that back up to houses on Winthrop, that are in the district now, that would be appropriate to include in that group. But.
Two.
That's, that's between Ed and Pamela, how they draw the map. But, that aside, what I really wanted to talk about is, I hear a lot in this discussion about residential streets and residential neighborhoods and blah, blah, blah. And I think people need to be clear that we don't have use districts in town, and we don't have residential neighborhoods, and we don't have residential streets, and we don't have residential zones. We have streets and neighborhoods that are filled with residences, but there's nothing that restricts that use. Anyone can take a piece of property and ask for a change of use. And then, and that's now, that's tomorrow, that could happen. So it's, if you live in a residential neighborhood and you have neighbors who live in houses next to you, that doesn't guarantee you that you're in a residential neighborhood. So this, this, as Wesley has pointed out, this district then protects the neighbor, the properties in there against industrial A, which is a 24-hour use. So I just wanna make sure people are very clear on, just because it's a residence now, doesn't mean it will always be a residence.
Mr. Moderator, point of order?
Yes.
Did someone move the question, and you asked them to wait two?
Say that again?
Someone asked to move the question, and you asked them to wait for two more speakers?
As long as I see speakers coming to the mic and waiting, I'm gonna, unless, I think she's already spoken twice, so I'm not gonna recognize her at this time.
Point of order.
I just, yep, I answered it. She's spoken twice. So I see no more speakers for the amendment. So this, what we're gonna vote on here is the amendment. I believe it takes a majority, not a two-thirds, to amend this.
He's not getting up, sorry.
So all those in favor of amending this article to exclude those streets, please raise your card.
John Martin, ready?
That looks like it's gonna pass. Could you read the streets again?
The streets in Ed's motion are Winthrop Street, Maple Street, Pickering Street, and the east side of Western Avenue.
Okay, all those, those are in favor, all those opposed to the amendment. The amendment passes. Now we'll move to the main motion with said amendment. John?
I'd actually like to make a ministerial amendment because of some unintended consequences in paragraph 6-15.7. I've already gone over this with the chairman of the planning board. The words reconstruction are in there in both the beginning of the paragraph, as well as special permit changes and variance changes. The problem with putting the word reconstruction as a requirement, any reconstruction, if, for instance, everybody knows the building downtown, the bank burned down, this would require, if you leave it the way it is, the owner of the property to get a variance or a special permit in order to rebuild. No lender out there in their right mind is gonna lend money on a property that potentially has, can't reconstruct itself. So the point was to amend the article by taking out the words reconstruction in the first paragraph, paragraph AI twice, paragraph A2 twice, and in paragraph B once, and then deleting paragraph B2 in its entirety. I'm sorry, paragraph BI, or B1, the word residential in the second line, rather than reconstruction. And what that means is that any construction alteration, extension, or addition to an existing structure, residential or otherwise, that creates a new nonconformity shall require a variance from the Board of Appeals. Does that make sense? Any of these other properties, they can reconstruct without having to go through some onerous process?
So can you, do you have that in writing? You can?
I do.
Could you read that one more time, please? Just so everyone understands.
So it's exactly the same article with, with the deletion of the words reconstruction. If you want me to read the whole thing, I will.
Well, you're changing the section that you wanted to take out.
6-15.7 says, "Regulation on nonconforming-lot structures." First, first word says reconstruction. Delete. Paragraph A, number one, any reconstruction. Delete that reconstruction. Fifth line down says, "Board finds that such reconstruction." Remove reconstruction. Paragraph A2, second line, reconstruction. Fifth line, such reconstruction. Delete the reconstruction. Paragraph B, I, remove the word residential, and delete B2 in its entirety, and it accomplishes what we're trying to do.
What is, what is B2 referring to, so people can understand?
That says, "Any reconstruction, alteration, extension, or addition to an existing non-residential structure." By taking out the word residential in paragraph I, the first one, we're talking about any structure that's gonna add to its non, new nonconformity would have to get a variance.
Okay. Okay. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Would someone like to continue the discussion on the amendment?
Hello. That's better. I'd like to go on record that, yes, I did speak to John. I've spoken, spoken to several of the board members so far. This is the correct thing to do. Reconstruction is allowed for a two-year period in different sections of the bylaw. So by taking this word out, it removes the potential for conflicting interpretations or requirements. I highly endorse that we accept this, move on, and then pass the main motion, please.
Any more discussion on the amendment?
Is town council okay with the? Move the question.
I'm, I'm okay. I don't think, I do not think it changes the scope of the article.
So I think I'm comfortable with that. So all those in favor of amending those sections,
please raise your card. All those opposed, the amendment passes. Now we're back to the main motion with that change.
Move the question.
Motion to move, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of moving the question? Anyone opposed? We are gonna move on to Article 13. All those in favor of Article 13, please raise your card. With the amendment.
As amended.
As amended.
Twice.
Correct. Okay. Okay. All those voting no, please raise your card. This is a two-thirds, and I am positive it is a two-thirds vote to pass this.
Woo!
I, Ruth Corrine, move that the town vote to amend Chapter 6 of the town zoning bylaws by adding a new section titled Temporary Moratorium on Business and Industrial Conversions, as set forth in Article 14 of the annual town meeting warrant, and to authorize the town clerk to assign such numbering as is appropriate to bring said bylaw into conformance with the existing codification.
Is there a second? Discussion?
In essence, Article 14 is a pause button on change of use to protect our residential and agricultural areas. This moratorium gives us, gives us time, the board of selectmen, to work with the planning board, to see how we can best serve our residents and businesses. We are committed to work side by side with the planning board, whether it's to strengthen change of use bylaws, add strict definitions, or categories to our special permit process, or whether that's to be, to ask for funding in the fall to assist the planning board with potential zoning or other, otherwise. I recognize that this is a lot of work. My commitment is not to just dump this on the planning board, but to support them and work beside them. In closing, I want to be clear, this moratorium was carefully written to protect three things. The downtown, the downtown district, that was just passed, thank you very much, and the planning board for their hard work, commercial business, and home occupation. So remember that the town saw fit to write a very strong bylaw regarding residential and home occupation to protect neighbors. We, why wouldn't we wanna do the same for change of use? And just because it was mentioned in the last article, I wanna give examples, which is, right now, with what's going on, if somebody, your, your neighbor, the person that lives beside you, wants to sell their home, knock it down, and make it industrial A, you could have a 24-hour plant beside you as of tomorrow. So that's just something to consider when you're considering this article. Thank you.
Before we move on to further discussion, does the planning board, this is, this is zoning bylaw, it's, are you gonna address that, Lisa?
I, I will, if you want, Wes. The planning board voted on this at their last meeting, which was May 5th. It was May 5th. And at that point, the planning board voted not to support the moratorium article by a vote of four against it and three for it. I voted for it. I'm up here to speak to it. I think this is a very important article and timely for Essex right now. As I alluded to in, when we talked about Article 13, there are no zoning districts, no zoning use districts in town, so there aren't areas that are designated residential, or business, or industrial, which means that any property can be anything as long as it meets the requirements of the bylaw, which are mainly dimensional setbacks in size of property and things like that. So with, without, and let me just put this sort of in context, too, because there are 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, and 346 of them have zoning use districts, and five of them do not, and Essex is one of them, and the other four are in the western part of the state. So Essex is the only town in the eastern half of Massachusetts that does not have zoning use districts, which makes literally every property in Essex vulnerable, not vulnerable, it can be used for anything. So the intent of the moratorium is not to necessarily propose whether we're going to do zoning districts, or we're going to somehow other strengthen the bylaws, but it's a pause, we're hitting the pause button, to be able to take a look at it and see how we can protect residential properties. Ninety percent of our taxpaying property owners are from homes, and so there's a large component of homeowners, and as everyone who owns a home knows, that's probably the largest investment you'll ever make in your life. And I think Essex residents deserve stronger protections for their homes against development, business development that isn't suited to the neighborhood. This isn't to say to exclude business development, but it's to find business development that it's appropriate in residential neighborhoods. As Ruth mentioned, we do have, unique to Essex, too, a zoning bylaw section that is for home occupation. And if you look at that, it allows a homeowner to operate a business from their home with a very strict set of regulations governing how many parking spots, how much traffic you add to your street. It covers fumes, and glare, and noise, and all sorts of things that would adversely affect the neighborhood. So that's sort of a standard, in my mind, of what a business should look like when it's in a neighborhood. Flip side of it is, if you go for a change of use, since you can only have a single use on a piece of property in Essex, if someone has a residential piece of property, or an open piece of property, that they want to turn into a business property, they can go to the board of selectmen, and, I'm sorry, planning board, and ask for a site plan review. When that happens, there is no notification of the abutters. So in our current site plan review, if you live next door to someone who's planning to sell, to someone who's going to put in a business next to where you thought there was a house, you don't get notified. And to me, that's, that's not right. So the site plan review process has less requirements and less review categories than the home occupation use does, which, again, to me, seems counterintuitive, when the home occupation, if someone living there and working there, and you put all these restrictions on them, but if someone moves out, a business moves in, they aren't limited by those same restrictions. So there, there's some inconsistencies in there, and I think that the site plan review process at a very minimum needs to have a lot stronger protections for our residents and neighborhoods. And again, this is, the moratorium gives us, as pause, as Ruth said, to look at the issue, see how we wanna address it, see what's appropriate for Essex, see what gets the support of residents. In the process, if the moratorium passes, in the process going forward, I would envision, and I'm just one of seven people on the planning board, but I would envision an opportunity for community outreach to understand what people want to see in sort of these restrictions on what can and cannot be done on properties, and where, where things appropriate and where they are not. Anyway, I think it's an important step right now. I realize that it puts a hold on what people can do with a residential and open property. It's a two-year moratorium, and part of the, what a moratorium does is it sets a deadline, in that we need to actually have some work done in that period, so that, this is a guarantee, sort of, to your residents, that we would be moving forward and trying to proactively do something to protect your properties. Did I use up my five minutes yet? Can I sit down?
You can sit down anytime, Lisa.
Woo!
Discussion over here? Yeah, over here.
Hi, my name's Antonella Muniz. I live on Harlow Street. I'm really in support of the moratorium for change of use. And this is perhaps a follow-up kind of question, but where the planning board does not support this article, I'm just wondering how we're gonna make the moratorium a successful use of time, rather than a waste of time, because we've seen moratoriums in this town before when nothing was done.
I'll answer that question. The, the planning board, we had a long discussion on this, and the people who voted not to support the moratorium were not voting against improving site plan review process, and they didn't say that everything is hunky-dory the way it is. They were more objecting to putting a hold on things. And so that, the objection was more towards the moratorium, more towards the moratorium than necessarily saying that site plan review process is fine. I think pretty much everyone on the planning board sees that there are a lot of flaws in the site plan review process, and that's something that we wanna address. I think it's also important, what Ruth mentioned, too, is that this is, you know, as Wesley talked about, it was six years in making for the village district. This isn't something that seven part-time volunteer people can do. So what I envision as the process is, between now and fall town meeting, is that the planning board does some outreach to the community, planning board looks at consultants who would be able to assist us with the work, and then at fall town meeting, we come back with a scope of work and a proposal from a consultant that we would wanna use, and say, "For our selectmen, will you fund these people so that they can actually do the drawing of lines, the writing of words?" And I liken it to hiring an architect to do something on your house, where the planning board would provide sort of the oversight and the inspiration, and here's how we want our community to look, and a consultant would write all the stuff that Greg would have to read, and, "Okay," and draw the maps, and things like that. So it's sort of that, your architect is, is bringing your dreams to fruition and drawing So it's sort of that your architect is bringing your dreams to fruition and drawing plans, same way a consultant would help the planning board for the work. So I think there is definitely momentum in the planning board to try and to work on this. I know, obviously, there's me, and I'm very in favor of this.
Right here in the center.
Yes, Walter Mears, Sixth Dodge Street. I just think at this time, coming out of what we've come out of, the idea of putting any kind of moratorium on business, when business has essentially been dead in most aspects of the world, is ludicrous. Obviously, if it's something you've been working on, and it's coming at this point, I just don't think it's an inappropriate time to even bring that to the table. I think that no one here has any idea, including myself, what to expect as we move forward from post-pandemic times. I don't know, probably a lot of people here, that their names aren't on the bottom of checks, they're just written out to them, but being someone that does have to sign the checks, ensure the goods, ensure everything that happens every single day is changing. And I just think, I think you should vote no for the fact that this is a piece of the puzzle without the entire puzzle. I think the last one was a piece of the puzzle without the entire puzzle. Again, I've spent no time on these boards or dealing with these things, and have an effort to do that, so if I'm missing something there on the planning board, or something like that, I apologize, but just being someone that does run a small business on a mixed-use piece of property in Essex, and if it wasn't something that could happen, we would have lost our business when we were able to do it. So obviously, it was something that was preset. I just think right now is a terrible time to put any additional delay, or death, or potential, you know, stress or anxiety on people coming out of what we've come out of, and I would love to hear their response to that.
So Ruth mentioned it when she introduced the article, but the article is written specifically to limit change of use on existing residential properties or existing open properties, and it does nothing to change anything about existing businesses, existing commercial, industrial, anything like that. It doesn't do anything, it has no effect on home occupations, anything like that. So it's not putting any burden on any existing businesses in town. What it might do is preclude a new business from coming to town and opening up, but it does not affect existing businesses, and in that respect, actually, it eliminates competition for businesses that are existing here in town.
I think we have Mark over here.
Mark Renzi, a member of the Strategic Planning Committee. We've discussed this at the Strategic Planning Committee. This is one important aspect. We have not voted on this, but as a resident, I'm very supportive of this. I know that there's a number of zoning aspects here that we're trying to get right in town, and that this is another component of that, and I know that we're soliciting expert feedback in order to get this right if this moratorium passes. And Antonella, to your point, as a member of the Strategic Planning Committee, I will make it a priority to use the time wisely. I move the question.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've been here for like four hours, so...
I have one person left to speak.
Just on that note, I do know that the current, our grandfathered-in, I appreciate that, obviously, specifically to myself, my family, but this is a step in the direction of control over this situation, not knowing where the next steps could go, and not to be, you know, to be negative, or to think that mal, you know, actions would be taken, but this is a step in the direction of putting a two-year moratorium, some two years to figure out what the best use of this is. And furthermore, bringing up the fact that a, and I forget the word, but essentially a large 24-hour operating business could come in, great, you're using the worst-case scenario, okay? If you've been in factories like that, and you've been around places, you would understand that the infrastructure here does not support a business like that to bring in the revenues, the staff, and everything else. I respect the statement. A lot of times, to make a point with our kids, with others, we go to the worst-case scenario. I just think it's something that needs to be known, that if you haven't walked into a building like that, or been a part of it, it's something that you probably shouldn't take into total consideration.
I think somebody moved the question. I think we're going to move the question. So although, and this is a two-thirds, this is a zoning bylaw, two-thirds vote, so all those in favor of Article 14, please raise your card. All those voting no on Article 14, please raise your card. I'm going to declare two-thirds pass. Article 15.
Hi, I'm Shelley Bradbury. In light of the recent elections and becoming the newest member of the planning board, I want to disclose that today on Town Meeting floor, that I am only speaking as a resident. I am not in any way speaking as a planning board member or representing the planning board, only within my rights as a resident. I, Shelley Bradbury, move that the town vote to approve Article 15 as printed in the Annual Town Meeting Warrant and as modified by the deletions and additional text shown in track changes redlined in the handout distributed at Annual Town Meeting as follows. So if everyone has that Article 15 handout, I will go and summarize for you. In Section 6-16 dot 2, Definitions, we struck number 15 and added 16. The reason we did that is the town changed the numbering system, and that changed the ordering of the article. Definition of service coverage, where it says in strike lines 4, purpose of this subsection 6-16, as follows to the end, we struck that. We felt that it was too restrictive to the carriers, and we wanted to be more balanced with that. In Section 16, .3, .2, .A, .2, everywhere where you see zoning districts, we struck those and added areas. As we've been discussing, we don't have townwide zoning, we don't have overlay districts. We do have a district zoning in Kanomo, we do own town land, and we have areas. And so we addressed that, so it would fit in to Essex, it would be compatible with Essex town bylaws. Section 6-16, .3, .4, .B. We struck section, added paragraph, 6.16.3.4.A, and struck capital A. We did this for clarity. The distance of, and we struck out tower or, and then repeaters, and then after, where it says no tower, and everything else, we struck. The reason we did this is for inconsistencies, and we felt like this has already been addressed in the setbacks under 6-16.3.5, and we felt it was redundant. In Section 6-16, .3, .6, .8, .12, we added the two words, seven days. This was omitted in error. In Section 6-16.3.7.C dot 2.I. Again, for clarity, we struck subsection, we added paragraph, and then we struck lowercase b and added c. Last one, thank you. That's it, right?
No, I think you have one more. 6-16, .3, .8, .C.
So in Section 6-16.3.8.C, the last phrase where it says, "In the planned wireless communication services." We did that to be more compatible with Essex zoning bylaws. So...
That's your motion? Is there a second to that, a motion with the amended changes? Further discussion, I hope.
I just wanted to address that we've been working on this for over a year. We did make mistakes, we owned it, we addressed it, and we made the changes on the floor today. So, this bylaw change does not prohibit a cell tower from going anywhere in town. What it does provide is comprehensive set of standards that establish predictable and balanced regulations of cell towers. It ensures that cell towers are sighted, designed, and constructed in a manner that is sensitive to the aesthetic and visual resources of the town of Essex, to preserve the character of town, to encourage the most appropriate use of land, to protect the public against the adverse impact of such facilities, and to protect the value of real property in the town of Essex. Our current bylaw is 24 years old, and it is outdated with the current explosion growth in technology of wireless communications. For over a year, we have gone to the planning board five different times for input and collaboration. They have stated that our current bylaw is adequate, and it doesn't need updating. They said that they have the power in granting special permits, and this is true. Yet the problem with this statement is that it's arbitrary to who is on the board at that time. It is dependent on that person's perspective, and most importantly, their knowledge of cell towers. It is specialized knowledge that most people don't know. A cell tower doesn't come but every 10 to 20 years. They're not expected to know this, like, every day. This bylaw gives the planning board the set of standards to follow, and it is their guide to thoroughly vet each cell tower application as regulated by the FCC. We don't get to vote on a cell tower at any time coming. However, as residents, we have the power in our vote to demand that our bylaw thoroughly regulates cell towers, by making sure they do their due diligence in providing evidence and supporting data to represent their coverage in a particular service area. This is our right and our opportunity to make this change today.
Before I have any further discussion, does the planning board, this is zoning also, can I get a report from the planning board?
May 5. Planning board voted not to support this unanimously, not to support passage of this article unanimously.
Thank you. Do you want to answer the question, as a planning board member?
I'll be happy to talk. You're going to get tired of listening, so... Okay, just for openers. The collaboration that she was talking about on the five meetings, we had some discussions. I've got an email that Shelley sent out on March 11. I've just received the final draft tonight, had not I had a chance to read this version. It goes on. It was given to us, or was sent to me then. It was placed on the warrant the following Monday. So inside of nine days, we didn't even have an opportunity to inspect this. This thing takes what we've got now, which is the bylaw governing the erection of the towers and the construction standards, and grows it from essentially one page, with the special permit process required, to 18 pages. Now, the planning board has not vetted this. I've gone through and picked out some glaring errors, and I see she addressed virtually all of the ones I brought up at the public hearing, but I've got almost two to three pages more that should be addressed long before this is even brought to the town meeting. First and foremost, the very first line of this states, see, the town will delete in its entirety, Section 6-3.4.5. That is currently radio telecommunications, cellular television facilities, including freestanding tower-type structures. Installation of radio, telecommunication, and it goes on. So the first step of this is to completely delete anything that we've got that is not, that we're able to regulate some, any kind of tower structure under. And the only thing that this particular bylaw change addresses is personal wireless system facilities. So we could follow in weak, we could have a 300-foot television tower, not that I believe it's going to happen, but if someone came in to build some type of structure that, we've lost our ability to even regulate it in any way, shape, or form. Now we can get into the actual bylaw, which I've got a solid three pages of issues. And one of the ones that really caught me, one of the things in here is requiring applicants to perform site surveys on all potential sites within five miles of any town boundary. That doesn't sound unreasonable until you realize it. Five miles reaches out to Ipswich, Hamilton, Gloucester, Topsfield, Rockport, Manchester, Beverly, Wenham, and Rowley. So this bylaw is going to expect them to do a complete survey of all of those towns and put it in writing that there is no applicable or available sites in any of those. And it goes on a little bit further, and there's another conflict. There's another section that requires evals out to 10 miles. So in addition to the ones I already read, you've got to add Boxford, Middleton, Danvers, PBD, Salem, Marblehead, Newbury, and Georgetown. That does not appear to be reasonable for me, and that's only one little item. And literally, I've got three pages that I found on my own. This is no whiz near ready for prime time, whether you agree with what's in it or not. This thing has got some serious issues that have to be looked at long before it should have been brought here. So I encourage all of you, as well as my fellow board members, we realize that this, I mean, we worked five, six years working on the one we just passed, to make sure that it fit. This does not mesh into our current bylaws well at all, and it should be reviewed and vetted long before it gets presented here. I mean, take a look at the red that she covered.
Thirty seconds.
And she only covered the items that I brought up during the public hearing, which was probably less than 10% of what I found. Thank you.
Next.
Hey there, I'm Gil Freedon on 104 John Weisav. I voted for Shelley, and I wanted to stand up and say to vote for her amendment.
For her motion, for her article.
Rob?
Rob, it's given 18 Main Street, I'll keep this quick. And I want to stress to everyone that, like, land use bylaws, like, take a long time and multiple town meetings to pass, so that's not unusual. It is painful, but eventually, you can often end up with something good, like we just did with the downtown district. Okay. And two, I agree that the cell tower structures, they come about once every decade at minimum, but they're pretty infrequent. I do want to stress to everyone that the, the, there is a, what would you call it? Federal preemption on wireless communication structures. And basically what that means is that the FCC, the federal government supersedes the law, like they are the final word about cell tower structures, not the town of Essex. So we could say, we could put a bylaw that says, anyone who builds a wireless cell tower needs to give us a shrubbery. And the FCC would be like, no, you can't, you can't require that. So this is why you have to be mindful about sort of bylaws that deal with federal regulations like, like this one. It's, look, the current, the current amendment is 18 pages, and it was about two-thirds of the total warrant for this year's town meeting. My concern as a FinCom member is that it's, it's very, very onerous, and it'll open us up to lawsuits. It's, it's just like, ooh, it seems kinda icky that way. I do wanna like, I, I, I think, another thing I wanted to point out is that like, one of the, the, I'm not sure what particular section this is. It's Point P. But it talks about the protection of scenic character. Proposed PWSF shall not unreasonably interfere with any scenic views. Which would leave, I mean, I'm gonna sound like Bruce Fortier here, I'm sorry for those who remember that, but just like, like, well, what, can it reasonably interfere? Like, like how do you determine whether something is either reasonable or unreasonable with a scenic view? I mean, I don't know, I'm sorry. I, look, I'm so, Shelley, I'm so glad you're on board, this is awesome, you're gonna do fantastic things, but like, you're, you're on your way, it's almost there, but it's not like, we're not, we're not quite there yet, and frankly, everybody, I don't wanna go through like 18 rounds of amendments this afternoon, so maybe we can, you know, post, definitely postpone or something. Thank you.
Center.
Good afternoon, my name's Diana Gurch, 11R Haskell Court. I love Essex. I love the Great Marsh, the close proximity to coastal beaches, the pristine farms, lush forests, picturesque town, great restaurants, and it's a perfect place for long runs. When my husband introduced me to Essex, I felt I had found my paradise. We enjoy swimming in the iconic Ebbins Creek every summer and walking around the fields in all seasons. But when I learned a cell tower was proposed to be placed about 500 feet from my paradise, I felt like a dark cloud was casting shadows over my Garden of Eden. I'm a mother of a young child and a healthcare worker. I'm greatly concerned about the potential unknown long-term health effects that electromagnetic waves may have, especially on children. And I'm very ecologically aware, and I'm against disturbing any environmentally sensitive area where our wildlife lives and depends on. That being said, I do use technology every day for my job. But why disturb this beautiful natural environment when perhaps thoughtful consideration could be made to place a cell tower in an already developed area? I filed my concern with the FCC, so my vote would be heard last year. Our current bylaw is, as Shelley said, 24 years old and in dire need of revision. Our town needs to be updated, needs to have an updated bylaw that will protect this community and environment and support rigorous regulation and thorough vetting. We need this bylaw to create regulations that are effective and protect our paradise. This is a paradise we live in and other people come to enjoy. Thank you.
I think I'm still in the center here.
Hi, Brett Prince, 7 Essex Reach Road. Over the past 25 years since our tower bylaws were written, cell companies have gotten aggressive and sophisticated in where and how they place towers. The clear intent of our current bylaws to limit towers to areas the townspeople would deem appropriate. Although the current tower proposal requires significant variances, we need to modernize to continue to protect our town. This bylaw does just that, it's built directly from other towns' rules. Now is the time to pass the bylaw as our time is short before a non-resident landowner and Verizon push to take advantage of our loose and dated regulation, putting up a tower in the middle of a residential area while many better locations exist just over the town line in Gloucester. As previously stated by the planning board, don't let perfect be the enemy of the good.
Give me a second.
Mark Renzi, 86 Southern. I have gone through this diligently and watched my wife hand our four children to me as she's assisted Shelley in making sure that this was done in a way that is thoughtful to modernize a bylaw that's very complicated. And furthermore, an attorney has been hired to make sure that this bylaw, it comports to state laws. And everything that I've seen that's been done can be spoken to in terms of that it's valid, it's legal, and it's been to the best of the ability of an expert to modernize this law. This is a very complicated subject, and an expert has been hired to draft it. I think the cleanup is warranted, and just as Wes had pointed out, in terms of trying to clean up some of the zoning for the downtown district, it's complicated, and, and, and I think we're getting it better. And now, there's still gonna be some issues nonetheless, but this bylaw really does address the majority of the issues, and I'm very supportive of it, and I think town council has said it is legal to vote on also. So I move to vote.
You want to address that, Greg, or no?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Sure.
Good afternoon, just to address the, the comment. Yes, I've reviewed this for legal form, and in my opinion, it is in proper legal form for you to vote on. However, I have not rendered an opinion as to the substance of what is written there, and whether it is legally proper, or whether it is consistent with state or federal laws, and whether or not it would expose the town to potential liabilities. What I will say is that, as was pointed out earlier, state and federal laws substantially regulate the, the placement of cellular towers, and those laws take precedence over any laws that might be passed here in Essex. Which means that if this bylaw is approved by the, the Attorney General, it still has to be applied consistently with federal laws. And one of those federal laws is that you cannot apply local restrictions that have the effect of precluding wireless services. And so the, the bylaw can say what it can say, but ultimately, a federal court will have to decide whether the application of a particular bylaw will have the effect of precluding wireless services. And that is something that is a complicated question that would occur on a case-by-case basis, and may in fact expose the town to future liabilities down the road.
Thank you, I'm all the way to the right, I'm gonna do the, I think they were all three up before anyone else, so I'm gonna go over there.
Thank you, Teresa Whitman, Lufkin Street. I appreciate all of the effort that has gone into this. I've appreciated seeing the signs and knowing that people are feeling engaged about something they feel passionate about, and I'm in support of that. I congratulate Shelley on joining the planning board, and I think that's gonna be a powerful voice, and that's wonderful. Knowing now that the planning board, planning board prior to this week's election voted unanimously against this, and hearing Wes's concerns about some of the flaws with the bylaw as it's written that we're voting on, I share a lot of those concerns. And what I'd like to know is from Wes, or, well, Wes, you've done your job today, really, maybe Lisa. What, now that you're, I mean, clearly you're hearing that there's concern and there's drive for people to have an updated bylaws or, or looking more closely at this and bringing this to the forefront. If this isn't it, what is it? And so if one of you could speak to that a little bit, and let me know, looking forward, is there a plan to now address this and look more closely at it through the planning board? Or is the opinion that what we have is sufficient, and that's what we back? Because that will help me make with, make my decision. Thank you.
Lisa, you wanna address that?
I don't think, thank you. It's clear, I think, to everyone in town and to all of us on the planning board that there is definite concern about the bylaw that we have. And I don't think that anyone is averse to looking at it and revising it. I just don't think we've had the proper opportunity, the proper approach to collaboration, and, and looking at, as opposed to, here's my bylaw, here's your bylaw. What we need to do is start from a point of view of what are the problems and where are the weaknesses in our bylaw, and how can we make it stronger? So I don't, I, I, I would, I was speaking for myself and not the planning board because we did vote against it, but we're not, I don't think we're necessarily against it philosophically, but we're against the, the format of it and the fact that it does present some legal diciness for the town. And so I think it's, you know, if, if this, if, let's, let's just say, either way this vote goes, even if it passes, there's a lot of work that needs to be done on it, and we'll be back here in the fall with more fine tuning on it. If it doesn't pass, we very well may be back here in the fall with another version of something that is suited to the Essex environment, suited to the way that our bylaw is written and enforced, and something that would still, in effect, perform most of the things that Shelley is looking to do in her bylaw. So voting on this one way or another today is actually not gonna end the discussion, it's gonna keep going. So I don't know if that answers your question, Teresa, hopefully.
Thank you. Still over here on the right?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jody Davis, 58 Story Street. Look, as a former town official and as a lawyer of 34 years of practice, I have real concerns about passing this article as written and amended and expecting it to survive legal challenges, of which there are going to be many. Personally, I would like to see an end to the threat of cell towers being constructed in sensitive areas in town. However, there is an overlay of federal law here that will trump, to use a phrase that's not used much anymore, what the, what the town may think it is doing. And, and I will say, I am hard-pressed to remember a bylaw being approved by the town in the absence of any town committee or town council supporting it. I may not remember it, but I don't think so, I'm pretty sure I've got that right. To, to do what this is asking to do is inviting a lawsuit from the current applicant and the state and likely the cell tower company that's gonna be coming in there. At which point, we'd better be budgeting a lot for legal fees. Now, if the town is comfortable paying for lawyers, far be it for me to discourage them.
No, no offense to Greg.
No offense to Greg. It'll make Greg's ear. But, but as a practical matter, Essex has run itself lean consistently by avoiding legal troubles whenever possible. Unless we want to revisit the sewer days, when we spent over a decade in court, finding our heads handed to us every time we went into court, until finally we got a sewer, we should think through the other way around. Rather than having a group proposing to us what is to be done, the planning board ought to be presenting something to us what they recommend. And I, I appreciate that that may be a problem for the current situation. But the current situation isn't gonna be rectified by ramming through an article without a lawyer who, whose duties run to the town, having participated in the preparation of it. I appreciate that a lawyer's been hired. I've known Mr. Renzi for a long time, he's a smart guy. But he also knows that a lawyer's duties run to his client, and the client is not the town. So with all due respect to the council, I would be much more comfortable if town council were preparing this and not someone on the outside. Thank you.
Still over on the right, we'll get, you're next. Up here on the right.
Hi, Antonella Muniz, Harlow Street. Shelley, I have a question.
Yes.
Did you personally write this bylaw?
Antonella, thank you.
That's gotta go through me. You can go ahead and answer the question.
Thank you. No, I did not. I don't have any law experience. But what we did do is we hired a lawyer from Boston, from MHTL Mahoney Heaney Tooney Lehane. Peter Mello is our lawyer. He is an expert on town, municipal town zoning. He is also a town council member for other towns. He is just like Greg Corbo, our attorney. So we did not hire anybody that could just whip out this. Our bylaw was mostly a model, our model was mostly used from Templeton in Massachusetts. They were in the same situation as we are, without a bylaw that does hardly anything. It, we, if it's not in there, you cannot regulate. So we modeled our bylaw on Templeton and also used Gloucester and Ipswich as our model, okay? All of these, especially with Templeton, their bylaw passed by the AG in 2019, and that's why we used it, because that is the latest of the bylaw, what was approved. We made calls to the Attorney General's office. We flagged everything that was going to be a possible problem. We got it cleared. We are confident this is gonna pass at the AG's office. Now.
Before you go on to the article, that was just answering their question. I'm gonna go up to the center here. You're up next, you're up next, by the way.
I'm Janet Carlson, 24 Apple Street. I note that Article 16, which follows this one, concerns updating bylaws on stormwater management. And to me, this underscores an obvious point, bylaws need updating. And if that's good enough for stormwater management, it's good enough for cellphone towers.
We're gonna stick to this one.
I'm making a point about bylaws today. I'm in favor of this bylaw, and I'm in favor of thoughtful development for Essex and preservation of the beauty of the environment that is the reason many of us choose to live here. Another point I want to make is that proponents of the cell tower bylaw update are not opposed necessarily to cell towers. They are simply keen to make sure that the townspeople have control over where and when they get built. I'll vote for this bylaw for that reason. I also want to object to Mr. Burnham's objection to 18 pages, or his comment about 18 pages, as if that's, there's a downside to that. When you go to a hospital for surgery, you sign a document that's probably 18 pages long that says, we'll try not to kill you. I would like our town to have that sort of protection with regard to a cell tower. And for anybody who feels you need better cell service in Essex, when I moved here six years ago, I had Verizon cell service, or more aptly, I had practically no service. I had no service in my home, none in my yard, no service on Eastern Avenue, no service on 133. I switched to Cricket Wireless, which uses AT&amp;T cell towers, and I have service absolutely everywhere in Essex. So this is not about needing better cell service today. This is about a bylaw that will protect our town and the beauty of our town. We don't need cell towers in residential neighborhoods, we do need an updated bylaw. Thank you.
I think, Shelley, you're up next.
Mr. Monitor, could our lawyer speak? He is present.
I'd have to take leave of the meeting and ask if it's okay with the voters. So I have to, there's a request to have someone that's not a registered voter speak, and I need a majority vote to do that. So all those in favor of allowing, is it Attorney?
Uh, Mr. Mello.
Mello to speak, raise your card. All those opposed? I guess Mr. Mello, you can, Attorney Mello, you can speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, Peter Mello. As you can imagine, in over 15 years of litigation, contended with virtually every conceivable fallacious line of reasoning, you know, you can imagine, whether it's a straw man or, you know, red herring ad hominem attack, these are all, you know, novice devices used to ma, mask a substantively weak argument. And with due respect, that's, that's all I saw coming from the planning board hearing. With respect to Mr. Burnham's, you know, fandom list of, of With respect to Mr. Burnham's, you know, fandom list of three pages of errors, we asked for that in a public records request, and it didn't exist. So, no, I'm responding to an attack on, you know, this false premise. There's this false premise that this bylaw was filled with errors, it's just not true.
But we're not going to argue that point, at this point. Stick to the article, please.
Thank you. No, again, respectfully, I didn't mean to attack. I'm just, I want to combat this notion that this bylaw is filled with errors, it's just not true. There was one, basically one provision that enumerated certain setbacks that was, you know, had different setbacks than another section of the bylaw. And that's not, that's really an innocuous issue. I mean, it's an 18-page bylaw. The other article that was proposed, I think it was Article 13, on a per capita basis, if you will, I think contained probably many multiples more, you know, those types of grammatical issues. It's really not a big deal. It's fundamental, you know, axiomatic zoning law that the more restrictive provision will prevail. So, even if that inconsistency existed, it wouldn't have been a problem. So, but again, setting that aside, I think what's important to underscore here is that this bylaw was designed, basically, to be more protective of the town. The last time the town updated its bylaw, you know, Bob Dole was a presidential candidate. Mark Zuckerberg was probably riding in the back of his parents' station wagon, you know, headed to math camp.
What's the point of order?
We just want to stick to the... Okay, what I'm saying is that it's outdated. This bylaw, it's unduly, you know, sparse. I think, actually, the town would face legal exposure, in my view, from a bylaw, from the existing bylaw insofar as it doesn't really have the sort of precision that would enable the board, whether it's a, you know, whatever land use board would, you know, review an application, whether it's a variance application by the zoning board of appeals or a special permit review by the planning board. There's not the level of specificity that really enables or empowers the board to, you know, impose conditions that are going to withstand judicial review. And that, so, what this bylaw is designed to do is to, basically, integrate a more fulsome, you know, robust body of standards and measures and, you know, submission requirements that enable the town and equip it, or the town's local boards, with the authority to really scrutinize these proposals and devote, you know, fulsome and adequate review to them. So, that's really what, and, you know, there was this notion that this is a cut and paste job. This is by no means a one-size-fits-all, you know, approach. This is a complicated, you know, process. You don't want to create one of these from scratch or from whole cloth without looking at the case law, looking at other examples of bylaws that have passed muster with the Attorney General's office. And that's, the 18-page text that, you know, has been presented at town meeting was a product of that process. We looked at recent examples, and the case laws, you know, and really, the whole regime of federal statutes and regulations and the like are, you know, they're fluid, they develop, they change over time. So, you can't look in outdated or an old case, for example, or an old bylaw, and, you know, be fully assuaged that it's going to withstand review in, you know, contemporary times. So, we looked at recent examples of bylaws that have passed muster with the Attorney General's office. We looked at recent federal case law, and what are the standards that courts are looking at? What have courts allowed local boards to do and to consider in connection with these types of applications? And, you know, that's what you have before you. So, you know, I just want, I just want to ensure that everyone, you know, understands that this wasn't some, you know, willy-nilly, you know, process, and most importantly, that it's not replete with errors, it's just not the case. A lot of these were technical corrections that were really innocuous, non-substantive, and, you know, sometimes when this false notion that, you know, it's overrun with errors takes hold and gains momentum, it can sort of sway a body, and it's just not the case here. So, I wanted everyone to understand that and to emphasize that. So, that's really, you know, it's not a paint-by-numbers thing. This is a very copiously, you know, analyzed and, you know, carefully prepared bylaw. It's, it wasn't sort of novel. It was based on a very careful review of other examples of bylaws that have been, you know, passed by the Attorney General's office. Shelley's right, I did call the Attorney General's office and ran a couple of things by them, and I think town council pointed out correctly, you know, just because you have Attorney General, you know, authorization, so to speak, doesn't fully insulate you from legal challenge. But, you know, any time a proposal is denied or conditioned, you know, you are susceptible to attack from multiple parties. So, this notion that, you know, this bylaw exposes us to any greater extent than any other bylaw...
Thirty seconds.
Sure. And more than the existing bylaw, I think, is inaccurate. I think, again, the current bylaw, to the extent that it doesn't really contain the level of specificity or, you know, specifically enumerated measures and issues that the board can consider, probably exposes the town more than this, more copiously and carefully delineated set of measures and rules and requirements would. So, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay. The gentleman over here. Y'all sit over here.
Bill Bradford, 38 County Road, Essex. I'll try to make this simple. A young lady earlier in this, under this article, mentioned about how she loved the town. I love this town. I don't know how many of you are older than I am. I'm 88 years old now. My kids grew up in this town. A lot of you know me. I'm tired of trying to figure out a way to stop telemarketers on my landline. I'm trying to get rid of my landline. To get rid of my landline, okay, I can't get half of my important calls. We need this cell tower, in my opinion. Thank you.
I think we're in the center here.
Hi, I'm Kathy Pinoyer, Grove Street, Essex. So, I've been part of this group developing these bylaws for the last year, and as part of that process, I actually spent a good chunk of last summer looking at all the suits, the lawsuits that were brought against towns by cell tower companies and that were ruled in the favor of the cell tower companies. And inevitably, it was really all about whether or not a cell tower could exist in that town, whether or not the cell tower is actually blocked. So, trying to look, you know, make this spin into we're going to be having all of these legal challenges around all of the different points within the bylaw that are actually protections for the town and the town people is erroneous, because when it comes to it, the FCC is really focused on whether or not a town is allowing a cell tower to exist at all, and that's nothing of what we're saying. We're allowing cell towers, we just want to be smart about where they go. So, that's the first point. The second point is that these companies have big pockets, and they can afford to do the research and the investigations five or 10 or 20 miles from where they want to propose a cell tower. They have endless money. So, that, to that point. And thirdly, is that we have reached out to the planning board multiple times, and in fact, were told that two of the planning board members would get in touch with us and work with us, and that never happened despite the efforts to email them directly and respond to them and to say, "When are we going to meet and talk about your issues with our bylaw?" Fourth point, I would motion that in this meeting, when somebody refers to somebody in the meeting, that they use "miss," "niz," or "nesses," not "she." And that is incredibly rude and disrespectful. So, I please would urge you to call people out when they do that. Thank you.
Ingrid Renzi, 86 Southern. I'm an introvert, but this issue has made me come out of my shell and come to my first annual town meeting and speak with this microphone. So, that being said, I want to say thank you to all the people, especially those with little babies who've been here for three hours and then some. That's amazing to have that kind of turnout, to stay, and I think that speaks to why these people are here, to stand up to protect this town. And in that vein, I'm going to just keep this brief by using Lisa O'Donnell's words. Lisa, who was speaking up here about the moratorium, she spoke in support of this moratorium as a way to protect our homes. She stressed the moratorium to help create stronger protections for neighborhoods and residents. I can ask all of you here now for you to see that this bylaw is doing the same thing. We need to protect the 40-plus residential homes that are contiguous to the projected cell tower's sighting. Lisa also stressed that the moratorium will help determine where things are appropriate and where they are not. This bylaw will do just that, and there is an appropriate place for a cell tower, but I don't think it's right along our wetlands and in a neighborhood with 40 homes with children and the birds that are in those wetlands. It's time to support this bylaw. Thank you.
I think we're still over on the right.
Hi, Antonella Muniz, Harlow Street.
Hold on a second. This is your second time speaking on this?
That's correct.
Have you spoken yet? I'm going to let him go, because he hasn't spoken yet?
Okay.
Thank you.
Tom De Mayo, 35 Water Street. Just a couple of points. If you're wondering whether the assertion that this is well-written is true or the assertion that it isn't, we all have the words, we can read them. So, I suggest anybody that's not sure about whether that's true or not should just read it. And I think if you do, if you take the time to read it, it's pretty impossible to see how a cellphone tower could get sighted anywhere, except, I suppose it's theoretically possible somewhere in the deepest portion of the woods, we might be able to find a spot somewhere. But read it and try to come up with a way of imagining it in our town after reading it. Imagine a possible place. The only suggestion that's been made is that it goes over the line in Gloucester. I've heard people say it can be done, but I haven't heard how. And if I read it and you do like the intersectional math of it, 500 feet from any resident in the town, 120 feet, 100 feet, 50 feet, you add it all up, there's no space. There's no space anywhere in this town for this. It will not stand. I mean, if you just take the time and read it, you will see that it doesn't add up.
I'm going to go over here.
Kathleen McKinnon, where I live, Fibe Brook Pasture Lane. Quick question, am I allowed to ask a question to the town council?
You can ask a question through me, and I'll see if he wants to answer it.
Okay. So, we're talking a lot about liability here and, you know, mostly that of the companies. Do we have any liability or are we in a litigious positions, potentially, with our own residents? Can we be sued by the residents of any particular area? Are we just concerned with the companies? So, can there be litigious in financial ramifications from both sides or really just from one?
Can I give you my layman's?
Yeah, because I'm a social worker and I have...
Anyone can sue anybody, but I can't speak to...
Okay.
I'm not trying to be funny.
No, I agree with you. That's why I just want to make sure, like, anybody can sue us. Correct on either side of the point.
Do you understand the question or... Okay. So, I'll let Greg speak to that.
Thank you. So, we can get sued anyways, is my question.
I don't know.
Okay.
I just know...
Go ahead. Through you, Mr. Moderator. So, yes, as was artfully pointed out, anybody can sue anybody, but...
Sorry, that was the heat talking.
Yeah, that's okay. But with respect to land use permits generally, you know, there are a certain number of abutters that would have standing to challenge the granting of permission to do something, as opposed to the applicant who would challenge the denial of an application to do something. However, generally speaking, although there are exceptions to every rule, when the town makes a positive decision to grant an approval and it's challenged by a butters, we usually suggest that the recipient of the permit bear the cost of the defense, since they are the real party in interest. And so, and a butter appeal typically involves less expense to the town than a challenge by an unsuccessful applicant.
Thank you, that was what I was looking for.
We'll go back over here.
Hi there. Hi, Antonella Muniz, Harlow Street. So, to the gentleman that spoke just before, Ms. McKinnon, in saying that you can't locate a tower anywhere according to the setbacks in the bylaw, those setbacks that are in this new bylaw that Shelley's proposing are exactly the setbacks in our current bylaw. So, that's false. This bylaw that she wrote is not prohibiting a cell tower from going anywhere, it's just regulating it. I don't understand why you don't want more regulations around a cell tower that could go up directly abutting your home. Get it on the books, we can worry about the details later.
Okay, Rob. This is going to be the last one here, because no one else is standing up.
Okay. Rob Fitzgibson, 18 Main Street. Real quick, I can't speak to if the bylaw or the article under consideration is filled with errors, but I do want to point out, we did start off this discussion with a list of fixes to point out. Quick trip down memory lane, many of you here may remember that in the early 1990s, the town had a cellular company approach about putting a town, a cellphone tower on town land. I was a "we" one at the time, so I can't speak from experience, but basically what happened is that the town voted it down and said, "Oh, gosh, no, we don't want to sell to those new-fangled cell towers." And what happened is that the company approached a private owner, and the private owner got the cell tower placed on his property. That private owner, you know, got a significant amount of monthly rental from that cell tower. So, one thing I want to remind people that, a thing like a cell tower for a town like Essex, is that it is also an opportunity for income, for industrial or, you know, business income, which is something that is important to us. And the last thing I want to say, look, I understand, everybody's very concerned about saving the landscape, everyone's very concerned about the environment, and in this, I totally am too, totally get it. I want to point out to people, though, that like, there are three abandoned buildings in the downtown area that have been abandoned for 20 years, and nothing, unfortunately, has been done about those. We have a very, very popular walking spot near Spring Street where a new residence is being built up right on the marsh. This is a land that was once protected property, and apparently it is not protected. We have three 40B proposals happening in towns nearest. Hamilton?
Rob, yes. Sorry. To the article, please.
Okay, to the article. I don't think that a cell tower article is germane to saving the landscape. Thank you.
Okay, you've already spoken. I'm going to let her speak, and I'm going to let you speak, and then we're done. Someone's already moved the question, so I'm going to let these two speak, because they were up. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Ann Febecker on Forest Avenue. And about the question of lawsuits from people in the town, people can sue... And about the question of lawsuits from people in the town, people can sue if they have health damage and there's no statute of limitations on that. They can do that in the future as long as it's necessary. And this is from B. Blake Leavitt in her book on cell towers. So that's something we should think about too. And the members of the board who decide to allow such a tower can be sued personally and so can the landowner. And so can the, those are the two things that come to mind. I guess the tower building company could be too, I'm not sure about that. But I know the landowner can be. And the telecommunications corporation limited liability definitely does not keep itself liable for such suits. They're the ones building the thing, but they do not keep the liability, they pass that down to the landowner or to the town boards. Thank you.
One last one.
Paul Penoyer, 57 Grove Street. So I just want to, I know it's been reiterated a lot, but the bylaw does not prohibit cell towers in Essex. It sets some guidelines, it makes both the applicant and the board, the planning board, selectmen, everybody, you know, more accountable. It creates a lot of transparency that are, this current rumor of a cell tower on 133, and I'm not even sure if it's a rumor, most people have no clue about that that was happening. We need that transparency. Also, someone just mentioned, you know, income. Well, this particular bylaw also states that the applicant needs to review any town-owned land first to see if there's a potential for the town to put up a cell tower. We do have lots, we do have places, those need to be reviewed. And boy, that would be great income for the town. I've heard rumors that, you know, it can range from, you know, $10,000 a year to $60,000 a year. Why aren't we looking at that as a town?
Okay, now we're gonna move on to the main motion, Article 15. This is a bylaw, zoning bylaw takes two-thirds vote. So I guess, all those in favor of Article 15, please raise--
The question is the law, secret ballot? I was gonna speak.
You have to get recognized, you can't-- Someone have a motion here?
Question is already been called.
There has been a motion to ask for a secret ballot. I need 20% of the people to stand up for a secret ballot? So all those in favor of a secret ballot, like I said, I need 20% of the crowd, which I think we're gonna be at 50.
Well, it's, you know, it's hard because a lot of people--
Okay, so we're gonna have to do this both ways, I guess, because--
Why don't you take a sense?
Okay, so all those in favor of a secret ballot, please raise your card. Raise them high, I can't, it's sunny out here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. That, 13, 14, that is not 20%. So we are not gonna do a secret ballot. So back to the main motion of Article 15, which is again, two-thirds. So all those in favor of Article 15, please raise your card. What do we need to do? Two-thirds.
It's just so huge somehow.
Okay, you can put those down. All those not in favor of Article 15, raise your cards.
We're gonna have to do this down.
I gotta do a teller count, sorry. So, we're gonna do this again, I need the tellers to come up if they're, hopefully they are all still here.
[laughing]
Two here, two here, one there, one there. So we have, we have six.
We have six tellers.
Do we have, we have six tellers?
Yeah.
Nope, one there. I need another one here.
She's here. This is it.
Okay.
And she's there.
There.
Yeah.
There. Okay, we have six tellers. What'd we lose? Yeah, we're gonna go off the total votes. This isn't tied down.
No. You can put your cards down.
Sorry, you guys are all set on one and two, we're gonna wait for over here. Are you guys good with your number? Then you guys can put your cards down. Hmm. You guys on first section are fine, not the second, she's, you're numbered on the second section?
Second section is 21.
Oh my goodness. Let's see. Who was the third one? Third, yes, I'm sorry, you can put your hands down. Who was the last one? It was 40?
Sorry, 19 plus 21 plus 40 plus 80.
80 plus 134. So the vote is 134, 4, 80 against, two-thirds would be, have to be 141. It fails by a few, so it does not pass the two-thirds.
Can we do a recount? Can we do a secret ballot?
That already got, that already got shut down, I'm not--
Can we do a secret ballot?
No, I've already, it's been asked, I'm going to say no.
Okay, can we do a recount?
They were all perfectly in unison the first time through, so that's not gonna change.
What was the final count?
134 to 80. And you needed 143, actually 142 for it to pass.
And how, how? 141.
140, 134. So the motion fails by less than two-thirds that was required. Article 16.
Do we have to recount?
Someone, no, I said no, we're fine.
I, John Philias, move that the town vote to amend Section 7-8 of Chapter 8 of the town's general bylaws titled Stormwater Bylaw, Illicit Connections and Discharges to the Essex Storm Drain System, Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, MS4, as set forth in Article 16 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Is there a second?
Basically, this will be in addition to our existing stormwater bylaw and these changes will bring us into compliance with the EPA.
Any further discussion?
I do have a question on 7, 8, 9, 1, on the definitions. And land disturbing activity talks about any activity that causes a change in the position or location of soil, sand or rock or gravel. I got two acres of a farm field that I'm gonna continue to plow up without getting a professional engineer to come into the DPW for a permit. I don't know why this is here the way it is without making it as a, it shouldn't be everybody. Farms, there's several of them in town, some of them agricultural easements and things that they have to farm and move soil. There should be, at least in that section, a waiver for farms or gardens or anything like that.
Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is mandated verbiage from the state and we're being forced to bring it into compliance. Part of the reason is because of our lack of zoning bylaws, there's people that can disturb land and not follow the stormwater laws that are prevalent in the state. So I don't know about the farm aspect of it.
I urge, unless farms are exempt from this, this is a farming community originally, it's a fishing community, a family, we shouldn't vote for this right now. Bring it back, a town meeting with the proper exemptions.
Okay, I think we're good. Center here, sorry, we'll go back to you in a second, go ahead.
Richard Cairns, 35 Martin Street. Many old homes in town have drainages from their basements, you know, storm drains, whatever, that flow into the wastewater, not wastewater, but into the storm drain. And I wonder if that, if this amendment, no, this motion affects that or would apply to that.
I'd have to review it for a second till you answer that question.
Does anyone want to answer that?
My name is Mike Galliam, Public Works Superintendent. We actually already have permitting up at the office, so you'd have to file for an MS4 permit to discharge into a catch basin or the town's drainage system.
Okay, even if it's only occasional?
It's already in place.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Yep, thanks.
Any other discussion? Seeing no one at the mic. All those in favor of Article 16, raise your card. All those opposed, motion passes.
I, John Philias, move that the town vote to transfer from Water Enterprise free cash the sum of $20,000 to design and or engineer and or construct repairs, upgrades, improvements, and/or replacements to any aspect of the municipal water system and anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second? Any discussion? No discussion. All those people in favor of Article 17, raise your card. All those opposed, motion passes.
I, John Philias, move that the town vote to transfer from the Sewer Enterprise free cash the sum of $100,000 to design and or engineer and or construct repairs, upgrades, improvements, and/or replacements to any aspect of the municipal water system and anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of Article 18, raise your card. Any opposed, motion passes. Article 19. You wanna-- You got a bunch, no? Peter has got that.
I, Peter D. Fippen, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $97,502 to purchase and fully equip two police cruisers for use by the police department and to authorize the board of selectmen to dispose of the vehicles to be replaced by new cruisers, sale or trade, and take other action as necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Nope.
Nope. All those in favor of Article 19, raise your card. All those opposed, motion passes. Before I forget, someone turned in an earring? Anyone missing an earring? Check. I'm good. Article 20.
I, Peter D. Fippen, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $10,000 to be used as match to a state or other grant for study, design, permitting, and implementation of measures that will improve environmental quality in Chabaco Lake, the Elwife Brook and associated watershed areas, including but not limited to water quality, wildlife conservation, or any other incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Yes. So Elwife Brook is clogging up with vegetation and sediment, impeding the flow of water out of the lake. Elwife Brook is the drainage out of Chabaco Lake, and it's also impeding the flow of inadvers fish into and out of the lake as well. We are working with Senator Tarr's office and the Chabaco Lake Association to look at what needs to be done to improve the flow quality in there. So we're looking for match money for any grant that they may come up with.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 20, please raise your card. Any opposed, motion passes. Excuse me. Article 21.
I, Guy D. Bradford, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,000 to be used as a match to a state grant program for the design and/or construction of renovations and improvements to the Canoma Point seawall system or anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second? Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 21, please raise your card. All those opposed, article passes.
I, James Witham, move that the town appropriate or reserve for fiscal year 2022, community preservation funds, estimated annual revenues or other available funds as specified in the Community Preservation Act Town Meeting Handout. The amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the Open Space Reserve, Historic Resources Reserve, Community Housing Reserve, Budgeted Reserve-- Historic Resources Reserve, Community Housing Reserve, Budgeted Reserve, Administrative Expenses, and Special Projects.
Before I have a second, was there actually a handout? Say again? One second. I think she's all set. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you. Discussion? Jim?
This is our annual attempt to spend some money on some good projects and projects that need to be done. This all comes out of tax money that is collected when people sell their house and move out of town. So it's not really a tax, but it's a good expenditure of some state money that has been, and local money that has been set aside for projects. We have several going on currently. We're adding some extra money to the vault field renovation that's being done. We have a plan for a, an area around the memorial area that'll be handicap accessible for the first time ever, which is a great thing for a handicap, for a memorial area. We've identified a tomb in the old burial ground, which is in imminent danger of collapsing, and it didn't get fixed as part of the bicentennial renovation of the burial ground because it's brick. It's not, it wasn't the material that the guy that we hired was used to handling. Mark Haskell, who lives just across the line in West Gloucester, has volunteered to repair the brick work for nothing. He believes it's a project worth doing, and I've been doing some research, and I found out it's actually worth doing more than I expected. It's Jonathan Cogswell's memorial and tomb. He was voted by the Essex militia to be their captain in 1775, and then when they reorganized all the local militias, they made county militias, and they, they formed several regiments. They formed the 3rd Essex County Regiment, and the men, 500 men strong, voted for Jonathan Cogswell to be their commander, and they advanced him from a captain to a colonel. He was a representative from Chabaco to the Massachusetts congressional hearings and voted for the Massachusetts Constitution, which had to be passed before the federal was passed. And then, probably most significant, when they closed Boston down and the British moved out of Boston, they were really concerned that they were going to sail up to Gloucester and level the city. They tried to do it before, and they thought they were gonna try to do it again. So General Washington and his command advised that Colonel Jonathan Cogswell's 3rd Regiment go to Gloucester and protect the town, and that's what they did, and the British never went there. So we're kind of excited about starting that. You're gonna see a lot of activity very shortly. We're gonna have to seal the tomb so nobody can get in, with the exception of Mark and anybody else that has to do some of the repairs. It's probably gonna take us a good, good long time, so... Any questions?
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 22, raise your card. All those opposed? It passes. Article 23. I've already asked, I've already got an article motion. After that, you can raise a motion.
I, Peter D. Fippen, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $7,000 to be added to the Internet and email service line item in the Internet network budget as voted pursuant to Article 6 at the June 13, 2020 annual town meeting for the remainder of the fiscal year 2021.
Is there a second? Discussion? All those in favor of Article 23, raise your card. Any opposed? Motion passes. Go ahead. Can I, can I just do the next two first, because they're gonna be postponed, and then we'll move to that?
I, Rob Fitzgibbon, move that Article 24 be indefinitely postponed.
I, Michael Flynn, move that Article 25 be indefinitely postponed.
All those in favor of Article 25, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. Yes, sir.
Yes, I am Cliff Agaloff, 44 Addison Street. I'd like to start the procedure to reconsider Article 15.
Which is totally allowable, we've done it in the past. I need a majority vote to follow through with that, so... Say again? I do. Thank you, Greg. Hold it one second. To reconsider, okay, got it. All right. Thank you, she's got it. So it's actually 2/3s, I'm sorry. Yes. I already had called for a motion on an article. You can't just stand up and yell... You can't stand up, you can't stand up and yell something, you have to be recognized. So, this takes a 2/3r vote to reconsider Article 15, so... All those in favor of reconsidering Article 15, please raise your card. I'm gonna have to have you count because it's a 2/3r vote, so I'll need the tellers again, hopefully. And the vote to reconsider means that we're going to go back and revisit 15 and have a discussion. Jim, you good? Yeah, go ahead and count. All those in favor of reconsidering, not, this isn't the motion, this is the main article, this is to reconsider. Which section? 3rd? On your own one? You guys are, you guys are set here? You guys are set here, you just hang on for a second. 56. Okay, we're all set. Those opposed to reconsidering Article 15, raise your card, please. It was off by 6. When I said 50, it was off by 6.
Can they call for reconsideration right after the vote?
Yeah. But they have to come up and be recognized, they can't just... She's just a quiet person. Section 1, you can, you can put your cards down, sorry. Keep yours up here and here. I said keep your hands up on the no over here.
What is it? What? 36.
And 3?
20? You guys can put your cards down.
The, the vote is 56 for, 76 for no, so it does not pass to reconsider. So, we are... Thank you. Not debatable, we can all go home. Thank you.